Again. I'm calling the meeting order before we begin. This is, by the way, this is a special to our council meeting. And before we begin, I will ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's YouTube. I ask that those of you in the room remain quiet and not being involved in discussions and those that have and that do the thing of resuming, keep their cameras off and microphones muted if they are not involved in the discussion. If you would like to speak in on Zoom, please use the with hand feature. For those in person, please be guided toward any microphone or the microphone in the lectern. Put the microphone on the left turn. It does need to be held up pretty close to your mouth. Before you make your comments, please state your name and industry date as long for record for game purposes. If this meeting gets interrupted for whatever reason, we will immediately end the Zoom and it's in the new link via email. I can't back to you.
Okay, thank you. I also want to announce that a council member Debbie Heller is available and she's, as you can see, she's on the screen and then the other person should. You're going to tell them. Okay, so the first agenda item is consideration of the agendas presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I heard Circo. Is there a discussion here? You know, all those in favor? Next is, as required, a public comment period if any resident or guest wishes to has a question or make a comment, not necessarily on an agenda item, but of any other nature, you're welcome to do so.
On the agenda item?
Not anybody.
Anybody online? There's some. Okay, thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agendas. They're motion. A move approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second? I think I heard Circo. Is there a discussion here? None of us in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Thank you. Next, we have our building report from our. Oh, there's no building report. Sorry, that is an error. Okay, so we will now move to the next item, which is the forty-nine oh five Cumberland Avenue. It's a public hearing.
Actually, the opium was first on the town.
What do you have? Oh, you put me the wrong agenda. Oh. Do you have the agenda?
It's a public hearing, Mr. Mayor, for the permit consideration regarding five four zero one Uppingham Street.
Okay, thank you. So you want to re- I see that now. Do you want to read the rest of it? Since you started.
Yes, for additions to the existing property and HVAC and the removal of two trees.
Okay, thank you.
Applicants are Kai and Woo Young Chang.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we will begin. Today is February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. This is the hearing before the town council of the town of Somerset for the building permit application submitted by Wan Young Kai and Woo Young Chang for the property located at fifty-four oh one Uppingham Street, who are seeking first, in addition to the existing property, second, an HVAC, and third, the removal of two trees. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present the application or comment on the report. Next, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. We ask that residents be limited to one comment each and that they be limited to two minutes at a time. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound and you will be asked to please finish your thought. If you wish to speak on Zoom, the town manager will call on residents by listed name or the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. Following that, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public period, public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now will begin this hearing with the presentation of the town staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the mayor spoke, the applicants are looking to add a one-story addition at the left front corner of the house and a two-story addition at the rear of the house. They also propose adding a storage unit addition attached to the existing house on the right side facing Graystone Street. They are also applying to move to HVAC units and they will be located on the left side of the property and a new driveway as a part of the additions as well. The notice to neighbors was sent out on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five via first-class mail and did not receive comments via email prior to the hearing. So.
There's, there's one memo for, from Kumar Vaswan.
I did not receive from residents, but Kumar Vaswani, in his role as Chair of Public Safety Committee, did submit a memo to the council this morning. I know he's on Zoom and it's also quite a long memo, so. Kumar, maybe you could summarize.
Well, well, no, he'll have a chance during.
I started here, one, one resident. And then I'll give the building administrator's report since they are not here. The plan proposes a one-story addition at the left front corner of the house, two-story addition as a rare house, a storage unit add-on to the site facing Grace, Gray Street or Graystone. The existing carport will remain even if there is a new driveway. The two new HVAC units are proposed and will be located eight and a half feet from the left side of the property line. The attached storage union will be, storage unit will be located twenty-seven feet from the front property line. The two-story addition will be located twelve feet from the left side property line, twenty-six point three feet from the rear property line, and approximately fifty feet from the front property line. The one-story addition will be located twenty-seven point six feet from the property line and eight feet from the left side property line. The setbacks, building height, and all meet the town code. I will note too that the driveway is made of permanent surfaces as is required for the town code. February, Bailing submitted a report. Quickly summarize, Bailing found that for stormwater management, the application conforms to the town code. Because onsite infiltration will be provided for all runoff from all new impervious surfaces for a one-year storm event. The new impervious surface is total ten thousand and twenty square feet. A one-year storm, storm event would generate two hundred CF of additional runoff based on that surface area. The plan includes the following non-structural ASD practices, landscape infiltration and renewable pavement. These practices will infiltrate, infiltrate four hundred and fifty CF runoff during the one-year storm. And then for trees, our arborist, Culver Feather, is on Zoom. He would like to comment there. Dr. Feather, can you hear me?
Can you turn on this video?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Can, can you turn on your video by any chance? I guess you can't turn it on. Here it comes. Maybe. There you go. Thank you, sir. Even though he said, there you go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So. I didn't, I, I thought this hearing was going to be Monday. Or the, the first Monday in March. So I haven't completed any of the reports. But I have looked at the property. And the one tree they wanted to remove was a, a crape myrtle that was next to the structure on the east side. And I have no problem with recommending that removal. All the trees can be protected from the construction, including the redoing of the driveway.
Also had that the site plan shows the tree protection plan where the fencing would be.
Yes. So I apologize for not realizing this hearing was going to be tonight. I thought it was going to be on the first Monday in March.
So, so, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, man.
Yes, please.
Dr. Feather, you mentioned the cryptomeria. Do you have an opinion on the second tree that is proposed for removal?
The second tree was listed as what?
I'm, I'm looking now. Mr. Valdimas, are you aware?
I thought it was the only, the one.
It, it's, they're adjacent to the, both in the rear yards.
Just in the infiltration there. The five-inch diameter, sorry, six-inch diameter. I don't remember what's speaking.
Six-inch diameter tree, Dr. Feather, in the rear yard adjacent to the cryptomeria.
You're recommending removal for the landscape infiltration, stormwater management practice.
Yeah, I think that's a dogwood and I would also support that removal.
So, Mr. Town Attorney, under these circumstances, can we proceed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does that conclude?
Yes, Dr. Feather.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now the applicant will have a chance, please, whoever's going to represent the applicant. Please come forward and introduce yourself. Thank you very much and, and you're welcome to as much time as you need and. What did you say? Oh, yeah, yeah. Is it, can everybody hear?
Dr. Feather, can you hear?
Mr. Councilmember Heller, can you hear?
Not very well.
There we go. There we go.
We have, we have, we have tech support here today. Thank you very much, sir, for coming. Okay, now hold it close, please. Thank you.
Again, Lou Valdimas, Sun Arctic, Pro Project, President, Dr. Jenny Kai, who's here to support one more. Just a point of order. How do I want to share on Zoom and walk through if it's here or how do you want?
I could do that.
But Councilman Heller, can you hear?
Not very well. Yo, Lou, you speak kind of in a low tone. If you could wrap it up a little, that'd be great. Thank you.
You should be able to share your screen on this.
Sampling of the houses that we've done in the town over the years. Some of you will be familiar with these, but you know, this will be in the same vein where we're not doing a major the management of all terms of lower proposals. This is a house at the corner of Uppingham and Graystone. There was incorrect statement in the report from Doug. The storage unit that he mentioned is no longer part of the, part of the. This is the house is one and a half stories. It's split level. Where, where at grade in the front and then slopes down in the quarterback area. And it's a walkout at that. So it's a one-story addition. On this side of the house, location, and then two-story condition in back for abandoned space. These are adjacent, it's from properties and as EJ mentioned, I believe all these zones have been notified. There was also a, we got the public safety report. Residents' report about public safety today mentioning that the contractor hadn't, the contractor hasn't selected and he's actually discovered some interior demo. Same contractor did fifty-four or gray spot. A view. Front, it's split level inside. The end of the new house. And it's one story in the front and still two stories in the back. Everything that below is just need ribs on it. In terms of block coverage, we've got a level of thirty-five percent limit when we're done with, up to twenty-five percent. As EJ mentioned, the stormwater management with the handler in rear yard. This infiltration area in back, that's where one of the trees that they moved to accommodate that. We had to go on this location, so that outfall would be towards the right way rather than towards the north to the south. So this plan greatly leaves its current drainage that's going up to that property. Newber drain, starting with the, the infiltration area as well as all the runoff from back of ninety percent. It's showing drainage plan and the downfall of the drainage regulation for all the patient. But either address the public safety comments now or you can talk about the technical aspect of the proposal.
Why don't you do it all now? So that in case, because you might answer people's questions that way.
Has everybody seen the list? Did I have that? It's been circulated of all.
Yes.
First question is some of the general items that are related to our work, relating to the recommendations that the town. So in the application, we said no dumpster, no portable toilet. But the, our surveyor in my head showed on the plan, the dumpsters are definitely not needed. All debris will be removed by truck. The contractor lived in one. Out of a dumpster being used by, by all the residents. The portable toilet will maybe needed later, but will come back and you will put, set up a pitch for that. The passive bacon and the, so it's in the house until, until. There was a question about the width of the driveway. It's basically matching the existing and we're only replacing the driveway because they're not close to the sidewalk or anything. A question about any work in the right way. No one had complaints in the right way and the right way is shown on our drawings. In terms of parking, on our drawings, we showed a contractor putting three vehicles on site. You can actually fit Ford, three in the driveway without blocking the sidewalk. Other one, a lot of gaps, but four onsite. He figures there'll be one or two others occasionally parked on, on the street. Question about where will trucks make deliveries? And that is a fair point. They will have to, them in front of the house on Uppingham and on the side of the street where there's no parking lot. So we're probably working the, okay. How far it needs that plan and then how to market it. Perfect. But we'll, for transferring the material across the sidewalk, we won't be closing the sidewalk for sure. Standing for cement delivery. Terms of timing of deliveries, a concern about the PCC, bus pickup and drop-off. Talked to the contractor that he has no problems scheduling deliveries around that. He said typically he has delivery between ten and two, anyway, he's not helping to get it delivered there that early. He can notify, he said he could give you about three days notice for a delivery. The recommendation from the resident will get the town over five. Residents one day ahead and then the day after, the day, he would give you those approximately three days before you got a delivery. Part of the size of trucks, he doesn't, you know, he doesn't have control of the size of truck. Vendor is going to send to the site, but he will give them, you know, describe to them the dimensions, issue, turning radius and so forth, so that they can make their own decisions about what truck to send. It'll also, you know, we're going to be having construction meetings every other Friday and you know, if a staff member wants to come to those, that's, that's fine. Stay on top of the safety issue.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. If you can stay there so that in case there's questions. Council President, are you have any questions?
It just, do the applicants know that the infiltration methods they've used do require maintenance over time, including the permanent paving on the driveway? So that's just something that to bear in mind as you, as you do this. That's it.
That's it. Councilor Circo.
Well, I just want to pull the thread on the parking question. And perhaps this is just based on my personal experience around the town, the previous projects where we see very good plans of off-street parking or limited parking on the street, but the reality, there are many days when there's a lot more parked there. And I noted that in today, there was a contractor's truck just parked in front of the house in the no parking area for a good portion of the day. So somehow we have to do with that. I don't know if that's more than the town's coenforcement officer. But but we just, we can't block the street. So if, if you have to bring the delivery and use the no park area, then we have to point the town so that the other side of the street, we can make sure no one's parking there, so the traffic can get through.
I can work with the contractor as well as coenforcement officer. Make sure that the street is a block during construction.
So yeah, sorry. So is it a dirty question? Yes, it's just. Do you see any issues with coordinating with the town?
I'll see if you can coordinate. Oh, yeah. EJ, contractor's cell number. And then EJ number, so he coordinated. And loading on the arm, I'll call him personally. We'll be talking about.
The Councilman Heller.
Yeah, Steve kind of, you know, did what I was, what I was, was on my mind mostly. But I was wondering, and I don't know, EJ, if this is more of a you question. If we can't go to M C P S and move the bus stop for the duration of this renovation, because I think it's going to be really challenging to, for the contractors, people to really park as we would like them to. I think there's going to be, there'll be a problem. So if we can do that, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so I can reach out to Montgomery County Public Schools and give them all the information. It will be at the end of the day their decision on whether or not to move it, but at the end of the day, definitely. Give them the information and make the recommendation that they do.
The only other question I had, and maybe this isn't the time to ask it, is I am wondering where the heating and cooling units are right now where the house is located.
Debbie, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but they're on the back of the house.
They're in the, they're in the back of the house now?
They're on the side. It's right, there's one right now, right here.
Okay, so the new, the second one is just going next to the old, the old one, technically.
There's a little bit of an addition happening there. So they're, they're moving out about eight feet from where they are now, but still within, beyond the side.
And how many feet then does that get closer to, to the house next door?
Than it is now.
Is that eight feet closer? And is that, you know, what? Guess I wonder about those neighbors and are they, what they think about that? Are they okay with that? That's all.
We have not heard anything.
Okay, because eight feet's a lot.
And of course, at the end of construction in town, we'll do sound checks to make sure that the HVAC is in our acceptable range for noise.
Okay, that was, that was my only concern.
Yeah, we can definitely do some screening after, if there's a problem.
Okay.
Is that, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
You, Councilor Kumar.
Thank you for your presentation. Did you say that the contractor has worked in the town before? And did I know you correctly that they've worked at that location?
Boy, it works down Graystone, the other side of the street. The house got blocked, correct, on the lower eleven point six story.
Okay. Okay, so they're familiar with, with presumably they're familiar that with that intersection and with the towns.
Yes, and then talking today, he's, he's not going to be parking vehicles on Graystone. You realize that's the, the one.
Right. And I live across the street from Steve, just off the street there, and it's true that it's frequently cars are parked on the other sides. I think our town sign it, it's not visible potentially, so it's good to park on the other side. So there will be need for extra vigilance because you won't be able to police every delivery, every subcontractor. Just wanted to bring all that.
There are good recommendations in the letter today, but outside.
Now, I also had a question about the HVAC unit. Because now it's on the street side, on the corner side currently, the one unit.
No.
It is on the outside, but you're adding ones to that.
Right.
Okay. Is there, have you considered in the design to locate the HVAC unit elsewhere?
That's right next to them again.
Yeah.
So that's the best location for us. Also tucked in an alcove, concealed plant, tucked in an alcove. So shielded on the side, which is good.
Yes.
So that's our best location.
You know, we, our own house was upon our plot and that makes it hugely hard. There's very few limited spaces between the neighboring, you know, house and neighboring lot. So we actually put us on the roof. So, you know, and in part because one of the neighbors was very concerned about the noise being very proximate to their study or one of the bedrooms. So have, is there a way for you to actually locate the HVAC unit? To the roof?
I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
Don't have internal access to the roof.
Okay.
Which I feel would be a need for me.
And it's not a flat roof?
It's slope, the existing roof, it's remaining, existing slope is remaining. We have flat-ish roof on that, but it's it's all, it has a slope to it. And now we'd be broadcasting like.
Right, right. Well, believe it or not, it doesn't broadcast, but, but I can understand you would think that. Now, I appreciate all the efforts for stormwater mitigation. That infiltration unit in the back, how far is it from the joint, uh, joining property? In your rough estimate?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, okay. Thank you. Actually, I have one more question for Culver. Dr. Feather, I just want to clarify that even though this happened off schedule, you have reviewed the two trees that are scheduled for removal and are comfortable with that. I just want to reemphasize that because you were saying that this was off schedule.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay with recommending the council they be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And Dr. Feather, do you have any recommendations for reforestation?
Uh, yeah, I can, they should, there are two ornamental trees they're removing. So if they reforest with two ornamental trees, there's quite a few canopy trees on the site now. So if they can reforestation with two ornamental trees such as dogwood or red bud or flowering cherry, two to two and a half inch, then that'll be sufficient.
Ron, that's what's noted on plan, two-inch ornamental tree, two green ones on the, on the miniature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Revak.
Um, hmm, so are, are, are you guys planning then to have, like, when the big trucks arrive, someone there to kind of flag and like direct traffic?
That's the plan we're going to work out.
And like, do they, will the contractor have the staff to kind of like have people out there?
They'll have people, so there are companies that just provide that flag service.
Yeah, okay. And then, um, how long, how long are you anticipating this would take?
Full project?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments. So if, if people are in the, come forward. Thank you, Mr. Valdez. And remember to, let's make sure, welcome and let's make sure, why don't you test to make sure Debbie can hear you?
Can you hear me, Debbie?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Joanne Steller. I'm here with my husband Joe and we're the new neighbors. Um, and we're hoping to welcome them. Um, we've come tonight, um, to offer some questions. Um, because for the thirty seven years we've lived at fifty-four seven Greystone Street, we have, um, been working with Mother Nature unsuccessfully. Notwithstanding building one of the, one of the county's largest, um, water runoff conservation gardens. Um, we're still dealing with water watchouts because of the more frequent and more intense storms. So we, um, we are, um, a, a little shaken by the fact that the permits been issued, it appears to be on its way to approval. Um, and we understood that we would have an opportunity to ask questions. Um, and want to understand how the infiltration, infiltration system will work. We note, um, that on the, the plans that we've studied, uh, a larger portion of the roof is now draining through the year. It had previously been distributed to a bunch of different, uh, to various plants. Now, there's a two hundred and seventy percent increase of roof drainage into the bath. All draining into this really elegant infiltration system. Um, which we've won, but we note that the siding of it may drain better to the side. But it is right on top of the crest of, of ten feet from our property line and drains into the built improvements of our property. A, um, carport driveway shed and then a little river down our house. For the bath is the garden where we bought this, was originally going to drain and, um, thought we could be able to continue our mitigation efforts. So I guess, um, our questions relate to, the liability of the infiltration, um, the infiltration system. Um, once it's in, it will take time to get established. We know from experience. And we also know from experience it needs a lot of maintenance. And so, um, I think to, to try to crystallize the questions. Um, what I would ask is, um, is this siding final and is it the only siding that is possible? And if so, um, what will be done to mitigate water runoff during construction? Which, you know, inevitably happens. And what maintenance will be required either by the town or the county? Um, once this infiltration system is put in place. Um, there are a lot of, you know, rabbit holes we can go down in terms of soils running into roots, um, that the oak tree and others may have to be worked through. But generally, I think those are our questions and we offer them, um, with the deepest sincerity that we can work together as neighbors as we have done for thirty years with, with those that have lived in the, in the house.
So is that, is that going to be your only question? Do you have more?
All of our, all of our concern is around the.
But you, but you addressed all your questions. So do you want a way to do rebuttal? Do you want to answer this now?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome to have a follow-up.
Thank you. Um, so just want to be clear on the amount of drainage that we're alleviating here. It's hard to see, but this diagram shows the existing, um, drainage, including roof area that goes to your property. And that totals four thousand seven hundred square feet probably, including, including, uh, for this diagram, um, it's a heavy line, I have a dark line there. Shows the drainage to your property after, um, development, and that's only seven hundred and fifty four square feet. We're taking away four thousand square feet of drainage on our property and separating to the infiltration area, which the overflow will flow to the right away rather than to your property. Part of the reason we located the drainage here, I don't, our, I believe our surveyor is still online. He can address this further. Um, we don't know. Um, but we looked at a lot of different, um, possibilities for the drainage here. This wasn't the first idea. Initially, we were going to put a rain garden in the corner of the corner, but we're here. But the downfall for that would have been, would do all towards the other, in that point. We had to get it to a higher elevation, or in the rear yard. A little unfortunate because now we're taking away the area kids can play, you know, with the infiltration. We couldn't go any farther west with it because of the trees, existing trees and root zones that are there, that, you know, more the older, bigger trees that are, that are in that area. We looked at, you know, what we do in the, in front of the driveway, what we turn out and store it and it wasn't, just wasn't giving us enough, um, enough area. We looked at doing something on this side of the house, the slope was too great and what the hell aside. So that wasn't a good option. Um, so we were kind of stuck with this dome, the rear yard being the best, best place for the infiltration there. Can I get my survey on these as well?
Sure.
Shane, are you there?
Shane is on, Shane Green.
Yes, I'm here.
Please identify yourself.
Shane Green, Potomac Valley Surveys.
Thank you.
Let's see if I can get my video on here for you.
Oh, excellent.
There we go. Hello. Um, so as Lou was explaining, we put the landscape infiltration, uh, where it is so that we could safely convey any overflow over the berm on the west end of it there and out to the, uh, right away, rather than to the south neighbor. So we shared a similar concern about using a different practice in the back that would just let any increased runoff overflow, uh, to their property. Um, we're treating more than the requirement and we're providing safe conveyance for any overflow from a larger storm, uh, out to the public right away.
To answer your earlier question about during the construction process, we'll have a conversation with the county director about when he can implement this in the process. So maybe we get it in sooner, like other. We're going to be doing set of control. That might interfere with some of this. But possibly we can get this in so these are not affected by any potential.
I, I, I'm still, I'm still confused about, um, about.
Hold, hold on a second. Let's make sure Debbie can hear.
I, I can hear Joanne fine.
Okay, good. Oh yeah, here you go. You're going to give you the.
Um. Our concern, Lou, is, and, and breach of the, of the infiltration is, uh, is, is going to come right into our yard. It's, and it's going to come in where there's impervious surface.
If anyone comes here and away from that, it's a poor thing.
Um, having, if I can say this right. If it were, if the infiltration system were moved closer to the corner where you, where you had the rain garden in the first plan. You're saying it's still, it couldn't be drained out to Greystone Street from that point because of the grade?
Correct. It's, it's too low in that, it's two or three feet lower in that corner. So this whole thing has to fill up before it overflows. And when it overflows to go on that, not over, off the go, for, for.
Because of the berm that you built up there?
Correct. If we did the rain garden, the rain garden would have been allowed to overflow, like you said, wherever, wherever it wanted to go.
And it would have flowed right into our rain garden, which we can already mitigate, so. Let you.
We have heard. Joe, can you identify yourself? Just because it's a recording.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a recording and I might be, we might, thank you. Thank you.
Um, uh, Louie, can you go back to the diagram that shows the existing, it's the next, there, this one. Um, what we have current and we're coping with it. And the numbers sound like it's a big reduction of area flowing into our yard. But if you look at the roof area and the flow from the impervious roof areas, this one has existing, they're all going out. And we're taking our share on the south side from these two downsides. The proposed plan, essentially the only thing that's going this way is this corner. And all other of these roof areas existing and additions are basically coming down the back. If, if this is the baseline, this is two and a half times the water that's coming towards us. And so there is a unsettling. Uh, and it's right next to our improvements, the things that are most vulnerable. So if, if this structure, and it's going to take time for it to get established, is not functioning, it's, it's not like something you pick up at, uh, Lowe's or something and you drop in. This, this is, uh, a custom and it's an elegant solution. But, um, they're taking out two trees here. What's happening to the roots of it? It's going to be a lot of undisturbed soil that effectively, when you look at some of the, the, the standard details for this, it looks like the soil is all compacted and whatever. But this is going to be essentially all dug up and loose plans reflect that, this disturbed area. And so what do we have when we put back, this is infiltration. So water is going to be sitting in here. And it's going to filter out. At this line right here, there are drops of, of two to two and a half feet here and five feet over here. They're increasing the elevation of this fall. And it's going to be, whatever falls in here, if we have a, 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 a gully washer like we usually have, there's going to be a lot of water coming off there at a very fast pace. Effectively, this is relatively flat here. They're increasing it so that the elevation, so it's an elegant solution on paper, but the reality of it is getting to that fully functional structure. That it works. We've been through this in terms of our rain gardens and Mother Nature will have its way. Now, I appreciate, um, you know, the alternatives, but for us, this is very unsettling. And if any aspect of it is, is there's deficient, we're the ones that are going to pay, pay for it. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's just unsettling that all this looks fine in theory, but in practice. And after a while, things atrophy. I mean, I, I can show you all what we've done over thirty years. Spend tens of thousands of dollars just to cope with this situation. And this plan, again, increases it two hundred and seventy percent in terms of what we have now. And it, it, just look at the blue. And, um, I, you know, on paper, but in practice, and we know having to maintain, there, there's a maintenance factor here. So, uh, if you can, uh, address it accordingly, and, and that's why we're here, hopefully called, uh, or beginning a discussion of how to call our being unsettled.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Um, I think part of your, I haven't done the calculation, the two hundred and seventy percent that you did. But I think part of that difference is the additional roof area that we're adding that is now land area that's draining onto. I don't think the actual differential is much that you're saying. That's something I can go back and check.
Just look at the roof.
I understand, but part of that roof is backyard and patio, backyard patio that is currently drained to your property. But you can't, you can't, also you cannot count that.
Oh, I know. And, and effectively the patio that's coming out, you're putting back in, in terms of what is exposed uh, to rainfall. A lot of it is underneath your, your, your addition. So what is exposed is like three hundred fifty, sixty square feet. And I just kind of, let's just look at the roofs.
All right. I'll let Shane talk some more, but you look at the numbers overall. Roof is a different question, but overall, including the roof, again, we're reducing, we went to games. We, we didn't want to impact. This design was focused on alleviating the off-site drainage to your property. That's, that's what we're trying to do here. And we took away four thousand square feet of drainage area that was going to your property. It's not going to go to your property anymore. I understand the time of, you know, what's going to happen over time, whether this, this gets implemented correctly, because we're going to do our best to make sure it does. Sure, Jenny and Lou, if we're going to do their best to maintain it over, over time. As you said, it's an elegant solution. It does, does what we want it to do. I don't know what else we would do to make it better. Um, I think, um, well, Shane.
Well, I think that, um, Lou's done a pretty good job of explaining it. And I think part of what, uh, might not be clear on the plans here is that the landscape infiltration is cut into the ground. So there's a berm to the south side of our subject property that diverts the water from, uh, going on to the neighboring property through the lands. So now it'll pass through the landscape infiltration. And then over, um, the, uh, ground, over the outfall, through the swell there, out to the right away. So with that berm, as Lou said, there's actually less runoff to the neighbor than the existing condition.
Shane, how much, um, how many feet of water does the infiltration fill up before it goes to the outfall?
Um, I'm on a. I'm on a laptop here, let me see if I can tab over to the, actually, if you go to the second sheet there, Lou. That number's on there. Yeah, it's in the middle on the bottom there.
You've got twelve inches of planting media, eight inches of sand, twelve inches.
But the to- the total volume is right in the middle on the bottom of the page, which I can't read on the shared screen here.
The total storage provided?
Right.
Yes.
Well, that's the Somerset decrease.
But that's the calculation, so the the storage provided in the facility is four hundred and fifty cubic feet. Which is more than what's required by the town. Eighty-seven cubic feet more, and that's before it overflows.
So then how much higher is the berm than the overflow?
Well, the berm is at the elevation, the water surface elevation at. Put back over to my other plan here. At the two sixty-seven elevation, so the water has a six inch ponding depth. And then it overflows over that earth and berm on the west side there to the swell to runoff to the right away.
Alright, so it fills up six inches and then it's going out?
Yes, well, there's some storage in the media as well, but there's six inches of ponding depth on top of the media.
Is 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 that all you can? Okay, so I'm I'm gonna, I'd like the council to ask more questions, council president.
Yeah, the the four hundred and fifty, what is it, four hundred and twelve cubic feet that you're capturing? Is is that captured from at the point you install it? Such that as the media grow, you'll actually capture more water over time, is that the way it works?
No, that's just the volume that it can hold. The media is a planting media, so you. Use a porosity factor per the manual. Of so there's, the water fills in the void ratios in the media.
Okay, but at the point that you install it, it is able to capture four hundred and whatever it is, cubic feet.
That's correct.
Yep, thank you.
It's an it's an excavated space filled with planting media, and then the plants are installed into the media.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Council member Serco.
One of the things we talked about with the infiltration cross infiltration on your area. Is the need to maintain, because if debris collects in it, if soil. Rains down into it, then you'll have less volume to capture the the stormwater. So I guess perhaps this is more for the the town, but what is the maintenance routine? I guess, sorry, so for for the for the homeowners, what is, what maintenance do they need to do to?
General maintenance on these is the plants are maintained and the mulch is refreshed. Yearly same as with any other planting, planting bed that you would have on your property. And then if the planting media became fouled with excessive sediments or something like that. Which is unlikely given the grass lawn area where it's installed, but the media can be removed. And new media installed, but on a residential application, that's that's very unlikely.
Okay, thank you, and then I guess, EJ, how does the town enforce the maintenance of? These devices of water storage tanks, et cetera?
So the the town code requires when a stormwater drainage plan is imposed. The applicant execute a entry and inspection agreement that's recorded in land records that allows the town. Often in response to a complaint, to perform an inspection and to compel what maintenance the town deems necessary. And that has to be executed before a permit is issued.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Heller, do you have any further questions?
You know, I I guess just piggybacking off of Steve, I'm glad he asked what he did. You know, th- these plans sound great, they sound perfect, but I guess my big question is what happens when they don't work? And I I I can't imagine that you haven't seen plans not work before. And in that case, Steve, piggybacking on what you said, does that mean that we have the ta- the town? Enforces this, that the homeowner has to fix it, or the sellers have to do that, where where does this fall on? Who 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 has to deal with this when this, if it doesn't work? And I'm not saying that it won't work, because it sounds great, but what if it doesn't work, so how do we do this?
Well, maybe the town's trying to answer that.
Sure, so if the town grants a permit and approves a stormwater drainage plan. The town would be able to execute the plan as approved through its water drainage maintenance agreement. If if the plan itself is defective, the the town would not have further enforcement capability, but. The neighbors would have a potential cause of action if the natural flow of water was artificially altered. And the burden increased on their property, so in other words, the the neighbors would have to work things out.
So that and that can be contentious, you know, that's not, that makes it hard for two neighbors to get along when one thing isn't right and. So I'm a little worried about this, I guess I'd like to hear from the sellers again, to hear what they have to say about this when the round is over.
Okay, thank you, Councilor.
You know, let me play back, well, there are two sets of issues, one is. Is this the right location, the location you're at? And then there was also, I think I heard a question about what's happening during construction. So maybe we can tackle the during construction piece. Do you have any proposals? To minimize, given the general slope in the back of the property and their concerns? Water flow, because none of this would be established at that time, okay, many months, six, seven months. For this to come into existence, should there be a double silt fence, should there be other interventions that minimize runoff? Into their property during construction? I'm asking as a someone who has no idea what you would do, but I'm wondering, is there a way that we could minimize that?
Well, the way to minimize it is to get this in before the new roof. And before we do the addition, modify. We have, there's. Single self fence, not a double self fence, probably do a double self fence on this side. Contractor hasn't had this meeting. But that's the conversation we need to have, what what are the steps?
If I did it to playback, you could do a double self fence. And then you could sequence this so that it happens earlier in the process.
Self fence is not stopping drainage, so.
I know, but it's something other than nothing, so. And and you will do this earlier, you could do it earlier in the sequence, so it's less mismanaged area in the back. And then on, okay, and then the other piece was, is this the right location? And what I gathered from the back and both is that it is. Better than the other possibility, which is in the back corner. And I wanted to clarify that that's what I was hearing, and if, you know, that's what you're saying.
That's what we're saying, we could, Shane, not get it to work.
And the reason you could not make it work in the back corner is because it would be a lot worse overflow into the neighbors. And it'll be harder for you to drain the water out to Graystone, the overflow.
Yeah, the model would be to the neighbor.
It wouldn't work.
No, number wise, it didn't work, right? Shane, I'm sorry, did you, the putting the the rain garden approach or the infiltration?
No, if we put the infiltration back in the corner, the overflow would fall on to the neighbor, the sellers to the south. Which sounds like that's what they're concerned about. This design here causes the runoff to overflow to the right away instead of on to their property. So clearly, we're concerned about neighboring properties. I don't wanna say as much as the owners, because that would be a little bit disingenuous, I think, but it is certainly something that we put a lot of consideration into.
Appreciate it, and last question, is there any way for the infiltration unit to be deeper?
To be deeper?
Yes.
I mean, you could dig it as deep as you want, but it's only, the manual only gives it so much depth. So we have it at the depth that the state manual specifies now.
But more than that, we'd be down beyond the town.
No, I was asking a question, I'm asking a question, I've not said anything. I'm asking, can it be deeper?
The digging, if you dig it deeper, then it would hold more water, but I mean, I don't know at what point you would wanna stop digging.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Rovac. You'll you'll get a chance.
Um, so I think that the neighbors had voiced concern that that it, the elevation was being raised in this yard. Is that?
That's in, that's incorrect. This is cut, cut into the yard, it will be lower than their yard.
It's lower than their yard, okay, and then, um.
Here, here was lower than, you're saying lower than Jenny's, dug into Jenny's.
I don't really understand. It's what?
Dug down into Jenny's yard. It's not, it's not burned up above Jenny's.
What you're saying is the depth of the infiltration will be lower than the level of the neighbor's yard.
Correct.
No, no. No, I'm sorry, sir, you've you've. This is, we were on the rain garden tour, we put this together to let people know what. We have done over the years. And, can you hold this? At this property line, it drops off. A couple feet, and it's even a steeper drop off of the back. Like, if I sit at this terrace. Here in our backyard, the fence, the bottom of the fence is at my head. That's how much of a drop it is of into the yard. And what, what, what this is dug in, it's going to be. Still above, and it's filtering water which will disperse out. It slows it down, collects sediment, and lets it disperse in this collection. It's it's not retention, it's 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 an infiltration feature. So it's kind of letting it flow through.
So what, um, so how does that then, you know, I guess to his point, so. If if this landscape infiltration, you know, holds the four hundred and fifty square feet of water. I'm sorry? Cubic feet, water, um, so then it gets full. And then what happens to the water that comes on top of that?
Swell that hurts it out to the right of way, not to.
So there's a swale from this landscape that's gonna take it to Greystone?
Right, yes. Yeah, go ahead, this way. So it fills up here and then it drains out there.
And is that like, that does work with the, um. The like flow of the the yard slopes that way so it'll go to Greystone?
So these lines are showing how we're changing the grade of existing yard to make that happen. We go over here, we're down lower and we can't get to the right of way. Well, it'd be uphill to get to the right way for the outfall, the overflow.
One of the things about that far location is essentially it's going into our rain garden. Not into our build, our our shed, carport and house. It's directed into an area that. Is supposed to control that flow. This was a county map when we were applying and they were showing us. How much was coming off of this property, and effectively, we coped with that. This is what I'm saying is that we can deal with this subtleness. But when you increase it by two hundred and seventy percent, because you're pulling stuff, everything into the backyard. Oh, it it really unsettles us, and then you collect it just above where we're most vulnerable. And you can have the most damage, this is, this is the unsettling part about it. And I agree that they, it's an elegant solution. Wait, what happens? Has has come up with Debbie said, if there there's a, it, there's an aspect to it that doesn't work. We're then into a situation of confrontation, this is not what we want. And this is what, this is what we've had, and I'll tell you, they, this upper elevation is six inches. In that overflow. And if it erodes or there's, we we've had berms in our rain gardens that. They're just like some of the speed bumps in summer, Somerset, when you have a downpour. It doesn't slow them down, and it just, once it's it's breached. And and it wears down, I essentially.
I got one, I got one, Shane, I don't know about this, but. Joe, if we had a second overflow on the right hand side, that would divert to your green garden?
I I'd have to sleep on that, it's just having all this there that that.
Again, we have nowhere else.
Well.
And I don't know that there's an impact.
I don't wanna design it here, and maybe we need.
I think it is designed, as you said, it's an elegant solution, I think it works, trying to make it work better for you. Even though I disagree with your. Maintenance, yes. Holding water in there, I don't see how that is gonna affect your property.
Well, it's it's ten feet off of the shed. And I don't know what the county. But this water is, it's infiltration, it's going. If there's, if it if it's collected, there's a chance for it to overflow, but it's gonna sit there. And it could sit there and you have issues with. The stades and other aspects of.
Can't do that work, providing a solution that works.
Okay, so, so I think we're in an impasse now, so do you have any other further comments or questions?
No, I just, I I wanna correct the impression that this is, you know, level. This, when you're standing in our carport, this is up at your shoulders, this elevation. Right here, and. You know, to some degree, we have two trees here that are established, have a root system. And even though it's, there's more square footage, it's across a landscaped area. That's why I, my numbers are roof area. And the way it's worked is that it it has distributed it, not concentrated it. And it's concentrated it so that multiple times. Right where we're most vulnerable, and I, Lou, I appreciate the suggestion, but I don't know if that changes. If there's any aspect of this, I, you have to help. I I I, it's just, from our experience. And I can walk with, through all the things that we've done over the years. To cope with problem and to prevent it from going to our neighbors. This, this scares me. And what I'm hearing from legal counsel here is that, well. Just see what works out, if it doesn't, then you.
Well, I don't think he's saying.
And that's not the way.
Okay, I think you, I think you made your point, and the council will.
Is there like, um, an opportunity to put in like a drywall or something like? It doesn't have, but I mean, you know, like multiple, so I guess like, you know, from the stormwater management perspective, um. You know, maybe instead of putting all the eggs in. You know, maybe instead of putting all the eggs in this land, you know, escape infiltration basket. Like what if there were different mediations kind of scattered throughout the yard that took some of that water? And, you know, didn't filter it this way towards their, their backyard?
Yeah, so, um, drywells. Uh, would not be able to capture the patio area. They would only be able to capture the roof runoff. And then we would just have them, uh, because of space and setback requirements. Basically stacked up where the landscape infiltration is. So the only difference is we'd be putting the water directly underground from the downspouts. Um, rather than using this landscape infiltration practice. Which, um, is higher on the list of desired approaches in the town's code than the drywell is.
Do you know though, I mean, generally speaking, like outside our town's view of what is more important? Like do drywells, are they generally more?
Um, outside of your town, we would use drywells, uh, as a first choice.
And do you think that that would then mitigate more water?
I, I don't. I think the water in the ground infiltrating is the same, no matter how you get it there. They are better for homeowners because you can't see them and they require next to no maintenance. And that's why they're our primary choice outside of Somerset.
Yeah, it's interesting. Yeah, I mean, I think that everyone just wants what's the most successful for mitigating the water though. Equal.
Okay, so is, did you have other, um, did anyone else want to do? Okay. So you're, are you, you're finished your testifying questions? You, you have anything?
I have one final question. Do you have any information on the success rate of the infiltration system? In terms of meeting its criteria?
Yeah, um, so as far as success rate, I mean, they are. A hole in the ground with planting media in them, so they will capture all the water that fits into the hole. Um, so can they fail? Of course, everything can fail. I think that, you know, the only way that it. Um, we had the soils tested, which should have been included in the permit package, Lou. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so we had the soils tested. They did pass for infiltration. So, um, they should, they are suitable, uh, in the soils engineer's opinion for infiltration practices. Um, and so I don't see how this would be a failure of a facility.
Have a question that. Relates to. That was, uh, the soil type. I'm glad to hear that. But what about? Uh, just disturbing of the soil. It's, you're tearing out two trees. What happens to the root system of effectively? We lost a tree in our backyard and it took years for that soil to reconsolidate. Uh, and. One of the trees is right above our shed, uh, that's gonna come out. Contrary to what, um, uh, the, the town arborist said, that both trees are along our property line. Not along fifty-four or seven, uh, upping him. So in terms of dis- disturbance of the soil. You, you look at the section, it's nice and consolidated, but undisturbed. These are going to be disturbed soils. And, uh, you know, it's just not cutting it in nice. It, it's gonna, uh. When I've done work in our yard, I come across rocks all the time. A woman who owned this house before a seller, uh, was a master gardener and. She had, uh, uh, a forest of trees back there. What, you know, I, you know, that, these are the kinds of things that. Kind of get uncovered in construction. You know, it's a nice diagram, but the reality is we could have. Uh, uh, uh. Disturbed soils there. Shane, is, is that, uh, an aspect that no matter what the type is? You're assuming that it's consolidated, uh, type of plug and, and not disturbed soils?
Well, the infiltration facility is dug into existing soil. It's not built out of fill soils.
Well, but what I'm saying is you're gonna be taking out a tree. What happens to those roots? Are you gonna take out all those roots, grind it up? Uh, all this area here in terms of how do we get to this elegant solution? Is, uh, a potential vulnerability that that soil is, has been disturbed. And I know with our tree, it's still in this where that maple tree came out years ago. Because of just what happens with, with mother nature. Uh, those roots, uh, are, are there and they eventually. Mother nature turns them into soil and it just sinks down and it's something different. It's, 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 it's just, uh, tho- those are the kinds of cer- concerns that we have. In executing this and the contractor is, you know, he got his permit. On, on February twelfth and he spoke, you know, he took down the trellis today in the backyard. And my concern is, is the next thing you go to take down is the. Bobbing across the back and we're still discussing how do we control this? You know, this, this is a moving train. And if he wants to get in September, he, he has to do these things. To meet that schedule. So, uh, you know, it, uh. It's on set one, right?
Okay, let, let's, you have a chance to about that, but let's, uh, have Mr. Vaswani.
Kumar Vaswani is on Zoom, raising his hands.
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, so I have a, uh, Kumar Vaswani, Trent Street, uh. Want to just. Offer a very warm welcome to the Thai and Chang family, um. And I do have a couple of questions and then a comment and I had submitted some written comments in earlier. So one quick question. I think the town attorney said that, uh, if there's opposition to this, then he writes up a decision. At this point, is he planning on writing up? Has there been any opposition?
Yes, I would consider the, the testimony to be in opposition.
Okay, so are you going to write up a decision?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of quick things.
But, but no decision has been made yet. Just know that.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different outcomes of tonight. There might not be a decision tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the. Uh, application that was in the council packet did not have a house number certification, so that. Just needs to be signed by the applicant and submitted to the town. Um, is a planting plan required for this property? And requires it for new construction. Is this considered new construction?
It is not considered new construction in terms of a painting plan. So it is not required. That's more for like a tear down and new home situation.
Okay, so I just wanted to remind. Or let the applicant know that our town code, uh. Restricts what can be planted in the town right of way. And, you know, there have been problems in the past with people planting trees and. Tall plants and I just wanted to remind them, uh, to check the town code if they're planning on planting anything in the right of way other than. Low growing grass. Um, what's the width of the planned driveway?
Kumar, I hope you were on earlier when I went through a lot of your issues, uh, in the beginning of my initial presentation. Uh, but the driveway is, uh, saying it is now about ten feet wide. And it's only going from the carport to the sidewalk, the leading sidewalk and. Um, in terms of plantings, no plantings planned in the town roadway. Um, we do have a planning plan for the infiltration area and then we call out two new trees to.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so my comment is, uh, just kind of summarizing what I submitted before. Uh, usually these projects don't cause much disruption in terms of, uh, traffic or pedestrians. It's really only on those occasional days when you have large trucks coming over to. Or concrete or large deliveries of, you know, two by fours or. Roof trusses or floor joists. So I think the town, but on those days it can cause problems. I think the town really needs to be vigilant about that, uh, and I'll talk more about that in a second. Uh, so I suggested some actions the town could take and they're really just. Simple recommendations about signage and painting the curbs yellow, um. Notify the school system and even if they decide to move the bus stop. I think you still need to take these precautions because that bus still has to make it through there. Emergency vehicles still have to make it through that intersection. Um, and then. I do think there needs to be a meeting between the town staff and the contractor just to go over these. I think people, you know, contractors want to comply with the law and they're more likely to do it if. They've had a meeting and it's been explained to them why these precautions are necessary. And then, uh, and then on the, uh. On the. Suggestions for conditions of the permit. It sounds like Mr. Baldemus is pretty receptive to all these. I think. Most of the conditions I suggested are things the contractors are used to working with. And particularly, in particular, I think there needs to be some kind of system where if they're bringing. You know, any truck largers than say four, twenty-four feet. That they'll, you know, arrange it with the town. The town can set up reserved parking and then they can ban parking on the other side of the street. Um, the other thing is I suggest that the town, uh. Put a condition on that no vehicles or workers. Or even worker supervisors will arrive at the site before seven twenty, just to give the bus time to pick up students. And there aren't a lot of students that get on at that bus stop, but, uh, I just think it's better. Not to have other vehicles or workers in the way when the bus is coming through. And, uh, I do think that those conditions need to be put on. I'm not. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Baldemus is receptive and cooperative. But I think that these really need to be conditions that are put on the permit. And, uh. And I think the, the applicants will understand that because, you know, if they have kids. We're gonna take the same precautions to protect their kids as well for other construction projects. So thank you for, uh, considering those comments.
Okay, thank you. So do you want to give your rebuttal now and then we'll turn it over to the council to debate?
So Kumar, just fine with, uh, all of the last, I'll, I'll push back a little bit on the last one. I think it's unfair to. Ask them to hold their start, you know, about the twenty minutes, a half hour, um, extra. I don't think. Uh, he's already, I talked to him today after I got your letter. He's already. Committed and he had already planned, scheduled deliveries between ten and two. Doesn't want anybody coming, coming early. Typically the deliveries don't come in early anyway because traffic's too bad. The vehicle traffic dies down and then. Um, so I don't think it's reasonable. If you're parking all the vehicles on the property, they're working within the. Limit of disturbance. I don't think it's reasonable asking to hold the start time. Everything else. We definitely work out a plan that everybody agrees to, so we have limits on. You know, when the contracts can get filed, they will be cited by, by the town. And as far as the drainage, um, I feel like the town set a pretty high bar for stormwater management design. I feel like we've met it. I don't know what we'd do if we go back, if you send it back to the joint. We've done. As everybody said, an elegant design that meets all requirements that sees the.
Okay, thank you. So the public comment period of the hearing is now completed and the record is closed. Now we'll turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberations.
Right, so I really want to get a sense of where our thinking is before we actually try any, um, motion. So, um. Steve, I'm gonna start with you. You have the most experience, so your thoughts? I don't know if I have any more experience than any other residents of the town, but. But from, from my perspective, this is a. Fairly modest. Construction project. And I note that. If this had been proposed. Five years ago, before we had a stormwater management plan, there had been. No requirement for. The, um, mitigation that they proposed. And the council would not have had a, any standing to really object to it. We just had to lump it, so. Um, I think this is. This represents a success for the town to fund this one. All right, thank you. Um, Debbie?
I am, I, I, I agree with Steve that this is, this is a, a modest, you know, um, building proposal. My, my only, um, fear, worry, I don't know how we handle this, is the stormwater management. I'm really concerned that the sellers don't get washed out and this doesn't become two neighbors that are contentious with one another. Because knowing the sellers, they are not contentious people. And, um, I know they only want to have good relationships with their neighbors and I just would be looking for some way. To ensure that if this drainage system doesn't work, then they have to go back and fix it. Meaning the owner, the new owners of the house. I would love that written into the, um, into the permit.
All right, thanks. Um, Shannon?
I honestly, I have no idea why this even showed up on the agenda tonight. This should be in a regular town council meeting. And I don't think we've had enough time to digest this and like to send this to, um. To send this out, you know, by certify or by mail on the thirteenth to neighboring neighbors. You know, I mean, with the holiday in there and I mean, I just don't understand why we're doing this today. Like, it's not a town council meeting. It was. Designed to be a special meeting for, you know, these guys to deal with their long, you know, with their thing. I, I don't get it. Um, I, uh, think that, I, I don't know if. If, if these people, you know, if, if this project was to be. A house that was completely taken down and rebuilt in this way. Would it trigger a bigger stormwater? Like takeover of what they have to do? Does anyone know? Like, so if this, what, what if this was an revision? What if this was just a tear down and rebuild? Like, would they have to contain more of this water?
It would be the, it would be the same volume because you have to retain. All the roof surfaces for a one-year storm event.
For one year?
They're not only treating the new roof, they're treating the entire roof.
Yeah. But then the other difference is we just don't have a planting. We don't have any planting plan.
That's right.
That doesn't come with this revision.
That's correct.
Um, yeah, that, those are my feelings.
All right, uh, and Kabir?
Well, you know, I'm, I, I appreciate the comment about timing, but I'm glad that we were able to discuss it. And I appreciate the sellers were here and were able to educate us. And I appreciate everyone's patience that we debated this because it's, this is a small town, so how it works. Um I'm actually with Steve and Debbie. I appreciate Steve's comment. I I kind of think that it might have been, it would have been worse if we didn't have the stormwater. We, you know, there would be more runoff. If you're saying it's two X, there would be more water coming into you. Now there's some mitigation effort. So I feel that that's a step forward, to be honest with you. Um I think on, I I agree with Debbie's point that it it would be great if we can minimize conflict between neighbors. Hopefully they will be wonderful neighbors and I suspect they will be. And so I'm I'm totally open to finding a way to minimizing that conflict. Um and so if there is a suggestion on that, I I would be supportive of that. I would add that I think we heard from the other concessions. That during construction uh added silt mitigation effort. And then improving the sequencing of it. I don't know how we actually reflect that. But I think those are important because if we can minimize. Because a- as as you know, we often overlook the construction time. That's when everything is messed up. That's when water is flowing all every direction. That's when I suspect things will get worse. So if we can do anything to minimize that, I think that would be important stipulate as well and I'm open to suggestions.
And Mr. Mayor, may I correct my answer to Councilmember Rovak? Yes. So for new construction. The drainage plan must be designed to treat all runoff from all rooftop surfaces. And for additions, it's just the runoff from the new impervious surfaces. So the answer to your question is with with a new construction project, it would have been a bigger retention or treatment requirement. All right.
That's where.
Thank you very much. I I mean, a few comments myself. First of all, uh. Ron and Joe, you clearly have been through it and stormwater flowing into your yard and I I I sympathize with you greatly. I know, I know, I know how bad that must be. Um and you've toiled away at rain gardens to try to to address it. I hope you are addressing it now. Well, good, all right. The point that 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 the other council members are making is that we only revised our stormwater code three years ago. And in it, what we've developed is probably the strongest stormwater code in county across all municipalities. Um and I know that architects and surveyors are feeling it when when they devise these plans. The other point is that we have uh an expert. Surveyor independently review the plans when they come in. Um and he did review it and was satisfied that it was um a viable plan. And capturing more runoff than is required by our code. And our code requires capturing a lot of runoff. So that that's it. I understand also the 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 anxiety you're feeling over this new construction. Because there i- 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 it's coming and 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 uncertain. And things could go wrong and then it could, you you're gonna take more stormwater if you go wrong. So um what I have to tell you there is that we have to go by the code. We 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 have to decide it by the code and like, you know, they are meeting the code is the point. And that's 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 where my view is. All right.
Well, I mean, I don't know if we want to do like, you know, kind of delay until we can have them have a different conversation with the neighbors. Kind of talk and see if there's other options. And then also, it doesn't sound like we have um. Any kind of slit fencing um to go around or any plan that that has. That's part of this.
But the our construct, I mean, uh our lawyer can help us with that. Our our. Our code requires silt fences during construction.
Why can't, why can't we just put something in the permit that says that if the stormwater management doesn't work, they have to, the 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 new, the new um. The the new owners have to fix it. Why can't that be part of the pro- permit?
I agree with Debbie. Do you have any suggestions there?
I can answer that. The the code does not currently. Empower the town or grant the town continuing jurisdiction. Over a plan once construction is complete, other than that it's maintained as it has been approved.
And could you remind us again, the enforcement amendment that you mentioned earlier?
The code requires a entry and maintenance agreement to be executed by the owner. It's recorded in land records so that it is binding against the land in perpetuity. So if fifty years from now, the berm settles or the. Media gets clogged with sediment, then the town can compel the then owner to restore the. System to working condition.
Technically, that would, that's right. So the last phrase is important. Technically, that would apply anytime. If it's not meeting so-called working condition.
Right, but it's but it's limited to the approved specifications. The town doesn't retain.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just like too much stuff because you've got, you know, this is just for a one-year rain event. This is not talking about, you know, the the downpour that we've had on top of each other, you know, with serious rain. And so like, I don't feel like the town, you know, I think we don't, as a town, want to be responsible for, you know, water. You know, that we can't control the sky, you know, like we don't want, I mean, if anything happens, like it could be. A thousand-year storm that happens and their entire house floods for all we know, you know, so.
But I mean, Shannon, I mean, we have to write a code and because when we write the code. We give it to the builders and surveyors and the architects and then they're designing to that code.
I'm just suggesting that we not write into our building plan that we, you know, that we. If something happens to this infiltration system, that the town is responsible.
All we are saying is that regardless of what we write in it, we have the ability to enforce. That's what we just.
Yeah, we have, we can.
We have, yeah, and we can enforce it if it's not working in working condition and we can determine that. If it's not working condition, so.
Let 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 me try a motion to approve the permit.
Wrong. If I if I could just, before we get to that, um. There there's one aspect of this project in particular that that concerns me a little bit. And it's something that Dr. Featherstone wasn't really able to address because he hasn't really looked at it. And that's the trees, the tree removals, tree reforestation. Um as I've heard the neighbors talk about how the two trees are being removed are near their property line. Would be absorbing that root system of those trees would be absorbing a lot of the water that's infiltrating the soil. And the way this. The plans are now drawn, the new ornamental trees are. Up property, if hard to describe, but they're not near the property line. They're not. I'm not sure they're actually going to help absorb infiltration from that system. So but but I've also heard a a willingness on the part of the. Of of Lou and his team to consider some alternatives. I'm thinking instead of those small ornamentals, you get something like a river birch. And this would be for Dr. Featherstone with that, something that is designed to handle warm amounts of water in the soil. It's a it's a very small, can't be treated, goes about thirty feet. Um and I'm not trying to help the solution. I'm just saying I think there might be some better solutions than those two ornamental trees.
In different locations.
In different locations.
No, are you saying different locations?
Yes, in different locations, exactly. But I. So I I guess I I'm reverberating somewhat. Shannon said there's a lot to absorb here. We've had some really good discussions. I would kind of, I would, I personally would like to see a relook at the tree plan. Or what else could be done in that space to provide some additional. Mitigation or absorption of waterfall. And then we can maybe ask to look at that at our next meeting.
You you can make a motion to table the decision to a time certain.
Go ahead. Okay, so so. If I I I'm not sure I've ever done that. So I I would make a, I propose a motion to table this to.
Motion for continued.
Well, let's say, let's say, um. And the town attorney.
I don't know how much time the authorities would need in Dublin.
Well, you, you can table it to the next meeting and then it can be tabled. It can be.
That's a week.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, so.
So you can table it to a time. Does it have to be, does it have to be ten days notice? Yes. Okay, so table it. It could also be tabled to ten, for ten days.
He's saying to the next board session.
But you can, whatever you.
Or you can do ten days, right? So it's definitely better.
The hearing could be held during the.
If everyone's available.
Yeah.
In ten days. And and well, that would be, yeah, then you have to send out the.
To send out.
Yeah. Ten days, once the material is prepared to send out.
So I I would say that you could table it for at least ten days. The motion would be, Mr. Town Attorney, I bet, table it for at least ten days.
Yeah, or, well, yes, that works, Mr. Mayor. I think ten days is too short because.
At least ten days.
But but ten days is the legal minimum.
Right, but that's the legal minimum once the man be in a position to send out the new notice of the continued hearing. Which he won't be in that position until Dr. Feather.
So what you you recommend table for two weeks?
Or we could just say that the hearing will be continued and rescheduled.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay, so is that the motion you're suggesting? Okay.
And I would suggest continuing instead of tabling because technically under tabling, you need a motion to lift from the table.
Okay, so you want to fashion, help in fashion motion? Mr. Town Attorney?
Yeah, a motion to continue the hearing to a date to be scheduled.
Is there a second?
And and is there any other specific instruction that you want to give to the applicant, the neighbors and or staff? So what I've heard so far is that. Tolbert provide his report, which hasn't been submitted yet. And in connection with that report, consider whether. Another water-loving species might be appropriate, like a river birch instead of ornamental tree and.
So that's.
I'm trying to think of what.
Let's just make with the motion. Did you want to add anything else? Did you want to add anything else?
I'm just thinking.
So.
Like a revision of that. Sounds like you're giving him positive guidance. So my concern is, these are my thoughts, but I'm not an expert on the trees. I'm really looking for our town arborist to.
Uh provide that approved by the.
So the the town arborist can in his report. Make recommendations to offset the environmental loss. Experienced through the proposed removals. So the arborist, if not already having done so, can consider the loss of the. Stormwater drainage benefits of the existing trees, which may have a bearing on his recommendation for reforestation. So he'll have that opportunity when he completes his report. But I was, I was trying to get further at what you were suggesting about. The parties speaking about other alternatives. Did you want to give any specific instructions there or just leave that to the parties themselves?
I I I think I'm really focused on the trees.
Okay.
Because this also gives the parties, this also gives the parties time to try to work things out. Okay, so is there, and I, Shannon, councilor Rovak, second, is there discussion? Hearing on all this in favor?
Aye.
Nice. Thank you very much, everybody.
And and Mr. Mayor, we'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to, for the record, to address.
Yeah, sure.
I'm opening the microphone, but I feel like you've met the criteria, moving the goal towards that. Your stormwater management consultant has approved the plan, over tonight, proved the replacement tree. And now you're telling us we got to go somewhere. And you're, you know, it's down the road, at least two weeks, it's not a lot. And that's going to impact.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is continuation of a public hearing. Consideration of a permit amendment application for the property located at forty-nine oh five Cumberland Avenue. Submitted by Guido and Charmaine Raciale for an amendment to the site plan. To add an attached garage, an amendment to the site plan to add a retaining wall. And an amendment to the stormwater management plan, Mr. Town Manager. Oh, I forgot, I have to read this. This is because we record the hearing, so it's. Okay, today is February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. This is a hearing before the town council of the town of Somerset. For a building permit application submitted by Guido and Charmaine Raciale. Who are seeking, one, to amend their previously approved site plan to add an attached garage retaining wall. Second, to amend their previously approved stormwater manager plan to account for the addition of detached garage retaining wall. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town Staff can present their findings and submit for a record. The record a report on the application and a consideration. Next, the applicant will present the application. After that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the. Application, to the amendment application at hand. After that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusion. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision. And a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We will now begin this hearing with the presentation of the town staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor previously stated, the applicants have come seeking an amendment to their previously approved site plan. As well as their previously approved stormwater management plan, the first meeting with the council on February third, twenty twenty-five. Where a continuance was issued for this meeting. For co-compliance information. Uh there's some of the plans do meet the requirements of Somerset County, County ordinances specifically for the building height. For accessory buildings, the building height may not be greater than twenty-five feet to the highest point of surface or both. A rooftop, rooftop and twenty feet to the median height level between the using range of a. Permeable and answer to jungle route. At highest point, the garage is ten point nine feet. Setback of parameters, the setback of parameters for this particular project is six feet on the side. It is eight point two. And at the rear is eighteen point two. Uh the driveway material is not permeable. Uh that is because, you know, it has an exemption. If the post-construction grade will be five percent or more, in this case, from the front property line to the face of the garage, the slope is six point two. And the average driveway grade to the second trench stream is seven, six point two in my apologies. And then to the second trench stream is seven point two. And in a retaining wall, uh the wall is just going up the retaining grade and so does not make uh which meets the code. We're handing it over to the arborist, so it's a common stormwater. So. I'll be reading from Chris Steph's report from Bayland. Bayland Consultants and Designers Incorporated have completed our review and found that the application for modification of the plans. Effie Backroom number twenty twenty-four zero dash zero six dash eleven dash A C dash A. Is complete. You find that the application conforms to the code because onsite infiltration would be provided. For all runoff from all rooftop surfaces for a one-year storm event. The rooftop surfaces, including the proposed detached garage, total five thousand point two square feet. A one-year storm event would generate seven hundred and ninety point seven C F runoff based on that surface area. The plan includes the following E S D practices, landscape infiltration, which reflects six hundred and forty-two point five C F in the dry well. One hundred and eighty-five point two C F. These practices will infiltrate a total of eight hundred and twenty-seven point seven C F of runoff during the one-year storm event. The reason that a structural dry well was approved was because all reasonable opportunities for using a non-structural E S D practice at this location. Was exhausted due to the space constraints and presence of underground utilities. The, there is also a uninvited street protection plan and she removal permits. I will let Dr. Feather comment on those.
Thank you. Are you ready? Yeah, thank you, E J. Uh we updated the tree removal um report. To include the two trees, the council indicated they wanted the owner to ins- to install. On the east side of the property. He's also included his uh landscape plan, which shows the two trees. He's also included his, uh, landscape plan, which shows the two trees. On the, um. On the east side next to Cumberland Avenue, mark A and A on the phone. Um, the change in plan doesn't change the protecting plan that that remains the same. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you.
Let me just.
Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. Did you want to add anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now the applicant will have an opportunity. Thank you. Welcome. And can we test the, um. Mics at Devon Church. Councilor Heller, can you hear?
Um, he needs to say something first. I'll know.
Good evening.
I think I can hear. Thank you.
We try to hold it up here.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, it's good to see you all. Matthew, Warren, Paul, and Stella, Courage. Uh, who's happy, the applicants are Guido and Charmine, Brad, Y'all. Um, we'll be brief. It's already been a a planky evening for everyone so far. Uh, we just wanted to essentially. Um, say that we agree with the town's consultants, um, that all the findings, all the requisite findings. For approval under section one twelve dash nine of the town's building code have been satisfied. Um, and there were, uh, Mr. Bolt, uh, the town council had sent an email out with three specific questions. Uh, which we'd be happy to go into more detail if necessary. Uh, but we believe that those questions were all answered, uh, by and large. Uh, based upon the town's review of code requirements, uh, I believe that the town manager went through. The first question regarding permeable materials, the pre-construction grade exceeds five percent, post-construction grade exceeds five percent. Um, and there's some other challenges that may be infeasible to to have permeable materials. Uh, the second question related to the stormwater management plan, um, and I understand the last time there was. A question for from the council for some more robust analysis. Uh, we've reviewed the analysis that the town consultant has provided. It's consistent with what the Montgomery County Department of Permanence Services found. They've approved the stormwater management plan. It meets all requisite requirements and we're in agreement on that. Um, and then the last question that Mr. Bolt sent in his email, I believe, last Thursday. Uh, related to the tree, uh, replanting plan. Um, and we agree with Dr. Feather's, uh, report that the proposed improvements are consistent with that plan. Um, so I think we we believe the applicants feel that they can meet all requirements. Um, they're proposing. This this driveway and the retaining wall and a single, single car detached garage, uh, that meets the town requirements. Um, and they believe that under the the state law, county law, and the town law, they're entitled to build. Uh, what they're proposing. We would respect the request that, um, the town council approved these improvements. Uh, at this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions of Chair.
Okay, thank you. I think under the circumstances, I'm going to ask Ms. Rosenfeld to. Make her comments so that then the council can ask questions of everybody. Is that that agreeable? Thing I'll just facilitate things.
Thank you very much.
You are the chair.
Shown as a belt, uh, here on behalf of my client, founder, Chris Boric, and Dr. I raise our seats to the next door and. Forty eight twenty three, comes on the navigation.
Testing, one, two, three.
Yep, now we got it. Now the the light wasn't on before.
Is that them?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm here today to merge requests that, uh, the council denied this, uh, application for increment. And there are a number of reasons for that. First, I'd like to briefly take you back through the history of this application. As you may recall, uh, this plan has been here before you, about six months ago. Prior to that hearing, um, the applicant had shared plans with my clients that showed. That two trees along the property, shared property line were going to remain, um, one up. By the front, by the right way, and one along the property lawn. Over Thanksgiving weekend of twenty twenty three, the applicants tried to remove a Japanese maple tree from the property on the front of the property. And when they realized that they could not do that, they discontinued. There had been no permit application. On April fourth, twenty twenty four, the applicants removed four trees from the property without town permission. Including a ten-inch oak that sat next to the shared property line in front of the property. And, uh, you may have images of those that you can show them.
You can share with your chair. I should have permission already.
So the two tr- the two trees that you see circled in blue were to, uh. As as you can see, the tree shown up on the image, uh. Number two was shown in the initial plan drawings that were shown to my clients prior to the submission or around the time of the original submission. That's the ten-inch oak that was to be preserved. You can see in the next figure over Thanksgiving weekend, twenty twenty three, that is the Japanese maple. That, uh, was going to be removed, but then once, uh, yeah, it was advised that he did not have a permit. They discontinued trying to remove that. Subsequent to that, there were four trees. It were removed without authorization. The one on the lower left, you can see, uh, is being removed. That is the ten-inch oak. That was removed without permitting, and you can see both stump and where it is on the ground. And in the next figure. You will see on the next page highlighted in yellow, those are the four trees that were removed without town authorization. That was shortly before to several, a week or two before the council reviewed the permit application that was, uh, decided. And.
Yes, I can hear it.
You can or cannot? And the, uh, Japanese maple was removed from the property since April fourth and the council's May fifth, twenty twenty four hearing on the first permit. And the applicant advised the council that the tree had been stolen. All of those trees that had been removed are in the location where. Driveway application is now pending before you tonight. There were no other trees that were removed from the property without permit. In any other location, none on this property. At the time that the last application came before the council for a decision. The applicant had removed the garage and driveway from the application. And I want to, uh, read from you from, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to read to you excerpts from paragraph eleven of this council's decision. Uh, the applicant's counsel explained that in order to address some of the concerns raised by neighbors. Previously proposed attached garage that would have been allowed by right had been removed from the plans. The council's finding includes this. The town council is unable to fully evaluate the loss presented by the removal of the four trees that were removed without a permit. But notice that the trees were a ten-inch red oak within the footprint of the proposed driveway. And a six-inch flowering cherry, four-inch redwood, red bud, and a ten-inch great burl. All in the mid- middle of the property at the eastern side of Bunny and Ford and Cortez property. It's our position that the applicant removed the garage and the driveway from. The last permit review application in order to secure council. Approval of this project and should not now, at this point, be allowed to benefit from their. Unauthorized removal of the trees by resubmitting an amendment that now will allow him to achieve what he he was unable to achieve before. Because of those removals, this council and the community restricted their opportunity to debate. Whether or not those trees should have been removed and strictly the opportunity to debate. Whether or not there should have been tree protection measures, in particular for the ten-inch oak at the front of the property. And. And now, when you see the current plan. There's a very limited area in the front of the property for the two trees. That are being proposed for mitigation between the two properties at the front by the right way. We think that this sets that policy, that the applicant should not be allowed to benefit from bad behavior. And we do think that an approval would set that precedent. In addition. Should this council decide that you are inclined to, uh, grant approval? We do think that the driveway, in large part, should be built with pervious. A pervious surface. And if you'll give me just a moment, I do have an exhibit that I would like to share. The report that you have in case that, uh, under the town code. A driveway. Once constructed, kind of. Slope of five percent or more is not required to have pervious. If you take a look at the exhibit that I just showed you, you'll see segment one in blue, which has a slope of ten point six eight percent. You will see a nearly one fifty four length, segment two in green with a slope of four point one two percent. And at the end at the back, you see another segment, segment three, in a sort of pink. With a length of about forty five feet with a slope of four point four one. The town code, as I read, does not say that the average slope needs to exceed sign five percent from tip to tip. It is that that word average or average from end to end is not in there. This is a long driveway. There is a lot of pervious surface shown here. And as I read the code, the council absolutely has the authority to require pervious surfacing. On both segments two and segment three. And so for these reasons, we would ask from the outset. The council denied this permit because we think that it's really a piecemeal application. Uh, subsequent to the applicant's post-representation, who is going to redraw this application for the garage and the driveway in its entirety. And having come back, should the council decide to approve, we would ask that those lengthy segments of the driveway which. Are below five percent in grade, uh, be built in pervious, uh, surfacing. And that being answered.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Town Attorney. Should it, should, should we take questions first or should we have the applicant offer rebuttal?
Typically, we'd take questions before.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Thank you. If you want to just stay there in case, and then we'll see. Counsel, President Bard, do you have any questions?
But I do, um, and part of it is going to probably depend on a rebuttal. You've made a couple of assertions here that. Uh, I'm not sure that the applicant agrees with. Uh, the first is that all the trees were in the path off the driveway now being proposed. And I want to check to see if the applicant agrees if that's true.
Well, you, well, you can ask the app. Now you can ask. The staff. The neighbor lawyer for the applicant.
Okay. I I I will ask the applicant's lawyer if the lawyer agrees that the trees that were removed, um, were all in the path of now was driveway.
You're going to need to come over here. Is it okay? Are you two okay? Are you two okay to share?
Mr. Thorpe and I, we're fine.
I I'd asked, um, Eric, our civil engineer, Ted, I think you've looked at this when you submitted the plan to Mr. Feather, which shows the overlay, um. But I I don't think we agree that they're all within the path of the driveway. Um, but I don't know if Eric is able to share screen, but it's part of. One of the exhibits at least that I believe is in the package.
All right. Uh, second question is, what is the reason that the garage and driveway are now proposed? When it was not proposed in the original application?
The in the original application, when just going back to this, when I got involved, and as it was very late in the process. Typically, uh, at least from my practice, I do not represent, um, homeowners that are going for one permit. It's typically, you know, much larger projects. Um, and it was very complicated because the. The stormwater management that they were proposing, and there was interpretations under the code. That the planner box, the way that it was laid out was connected to the garage, which was connected to the house. So it was all being treated as one structure, which was creating, uh, a setback issue. Um, and I think Guido and Charmine made the judgment, um, that they were, the easiest thing to do was to eliminate. The garage so that it could comply with the stormwater management issues and not have a setback. After, since that time, and they had been, I think we went through this the last year, they'd been delayed for months. Um, and it's been a challenging process for them. Since that time, they had switched civil engineers. And I think they would probably tell them today, if they had Mr. Ted from CAS Engineering all along, they would have figured this out in May. And we would have been able to present this alternative plan at that time. Um, I can assure you that they did not benefit from this process. All they've had is additional costs. Um, you know, mental stress, aggravation, um, I can I can only imagine. Um, so it's been a difficult process, but they were able to get a difference in one year to look at it and figure it out in a meaningful way. Um, they also started out with the two gro- two motor garage that are now down to a one-car garage. Um, so they had to really play with the plan and hire a new professional to help figure it out because the one they started out with. Um, because of some interpretations under the code led them down a path that they had determined to be infeasible at that time.
So your your answer to that question is that it's a change of civil engineers that have allowed the driveway, the prior civil engineer. Didn't think a driveway was possible with the plan that was there.
It couldn't, there was a setback issue. They couldn't do it under the way that it was designed first time. Because of the way that everything was connected to each other, and now they had an opportunity to figure out how to do it in a compliant way that would require interference.
All right, thank you. And again, the answer to the first question is that you do not agree that trees were in the path of the driveway.
Correct, and I would also say the trees, that's already been treated by the town. They've been analyzed and financed. There's nothing in the town code. That deprives the property of the ability to to instruct by right improvement, laws of all departments. Because of what happened in that stuff, just there's no basis of laws of all of them, if they made a decision based on that.
Thank you. All right, I finished my question.
Okay, thank you. Counsel member, Sir Kyle.
Yes, thank you. Um. Couple of questions, I think more for town staff. As you look at the, uh, the green section here of the driveway. Is that considered permeable or infallible? What that is is like just pavers. Where the tires would be and the rest of it is grass or granite. At least that's my understanding of that section of the driveway.
Yep, per, uh. In terms of how we view or how, uh, the consultant student application, we consider the entire driveway just permeable or infallible. Okay, uh, so we didn't, we didn't break it up into segments as the, uh. Council has, like here, we just did the whole driveway as one segment.
Right, but. Okay. Um. And then I guess for, this is really for Ron, I don't know if we even have to go into close effort for this, but. To what extent can we consider? The illegal removal of the trees in our assessment as permanent application? And and just as a hypothetical. Trees were removed, we posed a fine. I would think that we could have required new trees to be planted in the same locations. And then we could. Be protecting those trees if you wanted to. So what can or we can be not considered here?
I'm not sure I understand the question, so please help me out if I if I didn't. So. Yeah, generally speaking, the penalty for. The unauthorized removal of trees is fining. And the abatement is the reforestation, which the council. Did impose in connection with the prior decision. Although it fines per se weren't part of the decision, but were levied at the same time as the prior decision. There is no requirement or provision in the code that. There is no requirement or provision in the code that. Would prevent an applicant from making future improvements because of a fine in the past. The question as I see it would be was, um, well. Is the reforestation imposed under the prior hearing? Subject to reconsideration based on what's proposed in the new application? Right, but I don't, I don't see a reason why it would be.
Can we pull up one second, uh Dr. Waldberg's report?
Sure.
If possible.
I can pull it up.
And at the same time, I also would ask that the location of the trees that will remove be shown relative to where the, where these things are placed.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Just, just while I still have the floor here.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, no. My recollection, which I admit is not locked solid here, but my recollection is that. When we approved the reforestation plan, or that reforestation plan. Had been developed. Like in keeping with the original building proposal, to put in driveway and the garage. But. But then we had, we had all the, the issues, things changed. I'm, I guess that's just a past tense. Had I known then what I know now, I probably would have insisted on reforestation. On the, where those trees were removed.
Well, then, if you recall, the three of the trees were too close to the house, so forget the driveway, they would have survived.
Well, that's right. That's right.
So that's, this is all consistent with the title decision.
Okay.
I forgot about that. Okay. Just somebody will show me something.
Dr. Feathers' report.
Yeah.
Hold on a second. You, you have the floor, so where's?
So I don't have any further questions, I'm just curious, I guess with Dr. Feathers' report, seven at the top.
So do you want him to answer it?
I can show the report. So how, uh, Dr. Feathers' report says he uh amends them, like, uh, he revises them, so you can still kind of see the.
So you, do you want to ask questions about the report?
Yeah, this is, so this is the report facing.
No, I, I don't remember any of this, that question.
I think the third page overlay has been convinced with the trees and.
Eddie, are you on the line?
So do you?
I'm sorry, I thought you were pulling up his report from.
Do you, do you, do you want more? Do you want more? Do you have any more questions? Okay, thank you, we're.
What page was your report exactly?
The top of the report shows all the trees where they were located, which ones that were uh removed by mistake.
This is.
You have been made it.
This is the latest report.
It's the report from the last year. The report shows the trees with the access.
Yes.
But let me try to put up, um, I have a plan of. That isn't in that report that shows where the trees were removed. See if I can get it on screen.
I have it, I have, I found it. Okay.
You have it? Okay.
Could you just say where you're getting that from?
Uh the town website from the packet back in May.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're, you're satisfied now.
I'm, I'm fine.
Eddie, you wanna?
Say something. Yeah, I, I, my right question is if they were in the driveway and that's what it shows and I don't have any.
Okay, so he's fine now.
Mr. Mayor, could we confirm who was online, I believe? There's a question whether Mr. Ted is online?
Sure that he is in the meeting.
Mister, this is Eric Ted with CAS Engineering. Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, Eric, you had studied and coming up with the plan, the overlay. Of the trees with the proposed, the new plan for the driveway and we checked throughout here.
Right, so the, so trees labeled on, on Feather's plan. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are within the limits of the currently proposed driveway. Um however, as, as been previously discussed, those trees likely would have been, needed to have been removed in order for the. Excavation for the new house that's currently under construction. Um tree number one. Um likely wouldn't have survived the, I don't believe that the new driveway apron is, is over top of the. What was tree number one, but tree number one, based on the plan shown. Likely would have been removed anyway. Um certainly that proposed driveway that's on the screen there. Appears to be either over top or immediately adjacent to that tree, so that tree likely wouldn't have survived those impacts. Um a- again, I don't think, um. You, you know, I think that those, those impacts were, were there. Whether or not this current application, um, you know, went through.
Yep, you were telling me about, you know, when you run a construction job. You were saying that you have to bring material from one side to the other side, that on the left side, we have some protections already for the newer tree. So we couldn't use the left side, we have to use the right side. You gave me all that.
Correct, yes. So, yeah, so access to the rear yard, y- you know, even to install the. Planter shown on this plan or other stormwater management, you know, you're, you're getting around one side of the house or the other. Um based on the plan shown. You know, the, the construction access would have been on the right side of the house, because that's the, the widest width. Um so those trees, you know, certainly, you know, wouldn't have, wouldn't have allowed for an excavator or. Um bobcats or anything like that to, to really access that part of the property. Um certainly trees seven through ten on the left side of the plan. Um those being trees on an adjacent property, um took priority over trees that were wholly within the applicant's property. And again, I, I don't believe that Feather's report specifically said that those trees. Couldn't have been removed with a permit. It just said that they were removed without permit.
And also what I'd like to add, so this is the new house. So this is, this are the stairs going down. Here there is a tree, so I mean, it's unlikely that you build a brand new house. Uh you know, and, and then you work around a five inches tree that is right next to your foundation. And same thing as this tree here, you know, when you build a house, it's not that you have the wall and then you can build next to it. You know, you can leave a tree next to it. You need to protect the tree. You need to add at least, I don't know, twelve, definitely and, and, and a draft fence. But you need to put some sort of tree protection, needs to be a certain size. Then if this is the wall, the foundation sort of, it's a, needs a, you need a little bit of space to build next to the wall. You need to put there a perforated pipe. So if you think about, this is the wall, then you need three feet, then you need some power tree protection. So you are not going to have enough space to bring material from front to back. And then, and I want to add, for the tree in front, it, it was cut, but it's getting replaced by five inches tree plus two other trees. So if you can present, if you can show, there be plant, can plant.
Okay, you're, okay, thank you. Counselor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Counselor Dumars?
I have two questions. Um the proposed amendment also mentions a. Amendment to the previously approved stormwater management plan. Could you say more about that?
The DPS approved the stormwater management provision, I believe, ten days ago. Um and Eric can speak to it. Eric, do you, do you wanna, you reviewed uh Christopher's F report and obviously your lawyer wrote it. You want to give your take on it, on the revisions?
Sure. The um initial application, you know, when, when Guido came to us, the application that went in front of um. Town of Somerset, I, I'm assuming that was, that was May, I'm not really sure upon the dates. Um originally had a planter box adjacent to a detached garage. Um and. At the time, it's my understanding, again, as previously discussed. That the town considered those structures as one, um which presented some um setback. Difficulties. Uh so CAS Engineering took the planter box. Um and installed or, or designed a landscape infiltration facility. Um which is sort of a larger um rain garden. Uh it extends about five feet deep into the ground, um and will retain. I think Bayland said six hundred twenty seven cubic feet. Um. And then we did maintain a, we did maintain the use of one dry well, although we put that dry, we moved that dry well to the front yard. Um due to space limitations, you know, we maximized as much of the rear yard as permissible by code. To uh install this length deep infiltration facility. Um and between the landscape infiltration facility and the dry well, we. Uh exceed the allowable or, or um design requirements for Montgomery County and the town of Somerset.
Thank you. How, how, by how much do you exceed?
Uh I, I, it's like twenty or thirty square, or twenty or thirty cubic feet. I can confirm lumber, I just need one second here.
Okay, and then the, you know, there was a proposal made here to make uh two segments of the driveway. Uh pervious. How does, I cannot discern from the drawings whether doing that impacts the current stormwater management plan?
Um so there are a couple of things with, with permeable pavement or permeable materials. Um first of all, I, I know there was a discussion earlier about whether or not, or what the material is. Sort of between the driveway strips adjacent to the house. More often than not with those, they're either um top coated with a little bit of light gravel. Or it's a low maintenance ground cover, whether that's lawn or something else. It's. Kind of dependent upon uh a- any end user. Um. We treat them as, 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 as a, as a sort of natural permeable space. Um not necessarily something that is meant to infiltrate large volumes of water. Uh it's just, you know, treated kind of like, like grass, like your yard. Um so two things to consider with. With permeable pavements is one is proximity to um structures. You don't want to infiltrate water adjacent to a foundation. Um because that water will not recharge the groundwater. Uh it just ends up in the foundation drains. And then gets discharged um via sump pump. So there is no benefit there. This, the county. Uh Montgomery County recommends, requires that um storm or permeable materials not be within ten feet. Of a building foundation. Um certainly, uh you know, the, the two strips uh. Between the two homes, um you know, are substantially within ten feet of that house. Um so I think that that's, you know, just from a county standpoint. Those, those areas are not suitable for permeable materials. The other thing to consider is, is that um you don't want to have permeable materials in areas of fill. There are portions of the proposed driveway that are um above existing grade. And you um start adding significant amounts of water to those. Materials, they will um liquefy and settle, and you will just cause problems with the uh above materials. So that just becomes a, a maintenance headache that won't go away until those materials are no longer permeable.
Okay, and then another question I had is that there's a, one of the new trees. A blue one. Sea canopy. Uh is right up front, right, by the driveway entrance, is that right? And that was the location of the tree that was removed uh illegally, mistakenly. Um which number was that? Number one? Was that the original number one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, what was number one? Red oak? Okay. Uh and then I have a question for Ron, which is that this is a am- uh amendment. Proposal. Does this mean we have the ability to review the entire application? Or we are only uh restricted to the amended proposal?
Please allow me to think about that for a little while. I'm, I'm gonna read.
No problem. I can, we can move on and Ron can answer that later.
Okay. Counselor, I'll write back.
Um so when this was originally, I can't remember and I can't find it in the paperwork, but. When this was originally brought to the town council, um. What was the garage plan and driveway plan? Like where was it gonna be?
It was, it was in pretty similar to where it is right now. It was a bigger garage in the back and. I think my recollection of the events were that there were a couple of issues that the town had changed their code in the middle of. Their application to re- to change the building height. So they had to reduce the height of the building. And then there was an interpretation with a stormwater planter box that was making. The way that that civil engineer was working, we couldn't work, make it work without variances. And given the length of the time and delays, you know, they, they, the applicant made the decision that they needed to get going with the principal structure. Um and I would have been unhappy with their civil engineer if I was in their shoes too. So they hired a new one that was able to figure out a way to do it and code on him way.
But what was gonna, I mean, I, but before that, like, so I guess after then, because I know that you, you know, the applicant. I mean, I thought it was a concession for the neighbors on to remove, you know, the plans for the driveway and the. And the garage, but what, um, what after then, you guys decided not to, to remove that? Then what, what was gonna happen? Where, where was the garage?
There wasn't a garage.
So there was just gonna be no garage on this house?
There could be a carport in a part. There was just a right, yeah.
A carport like in the front, like where that it was kind of before?
Yeah.
And so, um, and so now we're coming back and this is like a whole big driveway going all the way down. To the back and the garage. That's all new.
Correct. It's just the, it's a detached garage or the driveway. There's examples throughout the town, just like.
Let, let me give a little bit of history. So uh you guys were trying to improve the code, and so you guys modify the code. And then we worked with Matt, and then we went through four different uh basically store management things because. You know, we started with something and then you say, oh no, now there is a code change, you have to change it and so on. We've done our due diligence throughout the process. Uh we were supposed to present sometimes with a in April or something like that. And we met a month before with the managers, like, is everything okay and so on? Everything was okay. Even for something simple as the height, and this is the email. So you can, you can pass it on. So. I, I met with the manager and I said, look, you know, the town, the town has changed the height requirement. Are we in compliance? And then he said, yes, very complex. And we got it in writing. Fourteen days before the meeting. Somehow. We went on vacation for ten days. We came back and we had three variances. So and the three, the three variances were related to the house height. And then we related to the uh garage being next to the planter that sometimes right now doesn't work. So basically what was approved from for uh Dave Kelly, that the lawyer represented, basically doesn't work anymore. So my problems were those, you know, outside and then, and then garage. I mean, it's a, there was nothing related to the trees. The trees was just a mistake done by a contractor.
And just this.
And then uh with the, the CPJ, honestly, after changing four times, they stormwater management, you know. They said, that's it. they said, that's it. I mean, like, it couldn't, unfortunately, it was not cooperating. I asked the manager, and you guys can call him, you know, I asked the manager, okay, you are telling me that you, you made three mistakes. Tell me what I should supposed to do. The house height, pretty simple. Stormwater management, how do I fix it? He said, I don't know. I'm going, I'm leaving fourteen days. Unfortunately, I'm gone. So at some point, the town provided no help in the stormwater management. And then my civil engineer provided no help in, in figuring it out. Then, so at some point, we moved forward. I said, give me something. We built it. And then five months later, I hired a totally different engineering company, took a look over all at the, at the entire situation. I didn't know if they were going to solve my problem or not going to solve my problem. But looking at my property, it seems to me that, you know, you can have a driveway, you can have a garage, and you can have a stormwater management on the left. They were able to solve my problem. We submitted a, you know, a new proposal and here we are.
Hey, two things. First of all, you mentioned the David Kelly application, another project on Cumberland. I think council may remember, I was here for two hearings while you discussed scope and nature of tree preservation project. This maple in the front yard of that property located not very far proportionally from where it is placed here. That project, the council had an opportunity to consider, whether or not those trees were removed, that tree was removed and the extent of protection. The ten inch maple, it's now going to be replaced with a five inch tree, didn't get the benefit of that kind of debate. They have been saved, may not have been saved. The point is, that was not a discussion. There also have been some factual statements about the history and how this came about. And I would like to ask that you give a quiet opportunity to make a few comments as well just because he's been so personally involved in that sort of background, factual information first of all.
Can I share, shall I share my screen? I don't want to take too much time. We've been here a long time. Let me figure out how to do this. So. I think one of the, you know. So I think, I, I get the, I think I mentioned this last, we build a house, we get what it's like to want to have a house two blocks. I get that. I also get that you can imagine what it's like to kind of say, hey, there shouldn't be some limits in the tree protection stuff. The town kind of protects. I admire you. How it kind of works. I think that's kind of an honest debate. That's, that's, that's why we're here. I appreciate all the time you've given to this project. I know what it's like. My first Monday of every month is taking up for my different thing. All right, this three hours in council of all jury and I applaud how much time you have put into it. I'm pretty sure most of yours have been. So I, I get that. That's it. Give me five minutes. I think the idea that this has been an honest debate, a good faith discussion about these trees and these plans is just not something that is consistent with my experience. If you go back, I just kind of wrote these down to keep me on track. But if you go back to the first time that Guido and I met, we welcomed him, you know, it's gonna be a nice situation, new neighbor, yada, yada. He hadn't signed something based on the fact that I'd done this before seven years earlier, which is true. I don't remember what it was. I remember when I was signing that piece of paper, I sat down. I remember exactly where I was thinking, never sign something without reading it. And at the same time saying, this is gonna be our neighbor, this is gonna be here for the next couple of years. This is, surely I'm not gonna sign something that's not the right game sign. I see immediately, you know, a couple of days after thinking about it, that I signed something that just flat wasn't true. It was that he had come on this day, July twenty-third, ready to share the plans. And they, at the same conversation, he told me he hadn't developed plans. They just weren't ready. So I sent an email back and I said, hey, I get it. Just make sure you share, share the plan by law. Next time he comes by, September nineteenth, the date's important. Brings by his computer. I remember the, the laptop about the size of that iPad there. He was like, okay, let's go over the plan. I'm like, can't go over the plan by your laptop right now. I'm like, please, just share me the electronic plans. And there was a story that said, hey, wait, no, I can't. There's copyright protections or something like that. And I knew that that was not true. And, and this is all documented, but I have all this. I knew that that wasn't true because it was the same builder that we used. And I know the process. You can share the plans. Eventually we got the plans and I can go through at least some set of plans. And here, I'm gonna just show you right here. Where, you know, it, the, I think we've had some conversation along the way about, I'm, I'm not sure Somerset's gonna let you cut down all these trees. That's the way, that's how Somerset works. I know we had these tree protection reasons. We had, I think, this was earlier than the cherry tree thing that came along a couple of months later. But, you know, I, I don't think that's how it's gonna work. Whatever. I got this set of plans and it's like surprisingly sloppy with respect to the tree protection stuff, right? What you see are seven trees that were scheduled to be taken down and asked for approval. This is much different than if you go fast forward to when the actual permanent application happened, where there's like a dozen or so trees. They were just left off. And when you look at it even closer, right, there's this notion, this is the actual plan. I don't know what call this in drawing exactly, but this would be more detailed outside view of this garage in the back. When you see a situation like this where, okay, not included in the tree reduction plan was where the wall is gonna go over this twenty-five inch diameter tree in the back and, and a fence going over this one. It's just completely hard to, it's just in a very serious, right? And so then what happened that's, you guys saw this picture, but this is the situation where Guido came by and told me he had town approval to transplant this tree. I'm like, I don't think that that's true. You, I mean, yes, we remember the conversation. And, you know, I, I basically said, listen, if you think you have approval, go ahead. And I don't think you do. He decided that day not to remove. Here's the one that eventually got taken. Later on, this is fast forward a few months. This is when the trees were mistakenly taken away, right? And this is like a big mistake. Dozen guys out there, half a dozen guys out there taking down all these trees. And, oops, I don't need to do the video. This is just a photo. You know, part of it was me telling this guy, I'm pretty sure you don't, I'm sure you don't have a permit. I'm pretty sure you don't have a permit. You should call up the owner and check. And he's like, no, I'm full to take down this tree. We'll take it down this group. Utterly, no, no. Communication off. The trees were going down. That was just it. All right? And then, whatever, this is kind of my issue. You can, you guys can make a list in the one about replanting trees, but this is like a fifteen-year-old. Dr. Feathers can maybe correct me, but roughly fifteen plus range, you can't replace that, right? And so, you know, all those things happen. I think it's kind of unfair, but I want to go back to them. Sorry. A couple of other things I realized was that the application that he did file, where he signed the, where he, he asserted that it shared these kind of, it shared the plans, be read it carefully. It makes this attestation that he shared the plans in compliance with the town authorities. It didn't. Right? This thing was filed September fifteenth. The date's on there. It was before he came by even tried to share the plan later on. Right? So this is a game of cat and mouse from the beginning. And I find it, you know, completely not something that I should have to deal with, but I haven't. What can I ever, we don't say that he's had problems with, you know, I'm, I'm not so sympathetic, so I'll be honest with you. But then to top it off, you know, we've had, we've had this meeting. We had this meeting in May where you go through, it's clear in the record. It's clear in the record that, that the concession that was made in order to deal with the town's, the town's concerns, this group's concerns about the trees being taken down without a permit, were that they rescinded the, the driveway and garage and agreed to have a carport there. And that's what they did. That was their design choice. I wouldn't have probably chosen that same design choice, but that was it, right? And now we're in the situation where it's like, haven't we already done this? Why are we here? Why do I have to keep coming back? This is like a half dozen times that I'd be ready to come to these meetings. And I, you know, I thought we were done. The idea that, the idea that this is thought of independently, as, as an independent amendment apart from the original thing, that, that I just don't get. And it was clear from the town's decision that if you read the rest of this, it said, you're supposed to put two trees, two additional trees beyond or planted along our property. And, you know, kind of now what's happening is they're squeezed into patches of green space that are, are left for those trees to be planted. So I, I personally argue that this, you know, this, this is a done deal. I don't know why we're back, but it, it seems like the town has made its decision. I think there's a lot of factual ball going through when you talk about just the way that the, how many different plans there have been and what was, what, what Dr. Feathers approved and whatnot. And it just seems like, you know, something like, um, but the bottom line is, the fact of kind of having an honest debate about this and, and I understand Guido feels like he's had problems, but it's definitely the case. I, I feel like if I, up at the town, I kind of stick with it, you know, that we're done.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, Ms. Rosenfeld, would you please, after the hearing, send us the exhibits that Mr. Borick has presented?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we will. And, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Tentry, at this point, I think we can just have the applicant give her rebuttal, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but before we do that, can we just make sure there's no one else on the line who wants to?
Oh, yes.
Oh, Kumar Vaswani sent in comments because he had to leave.
Yeah.
Do you want to go over those?
Yeah, why don't you read the comments? Yeah, read the comments, just the record.
Oh, can I add one other thing?
Become, become over and.
You know, so.
So it's in the record. You know, use the, you gotta use the microphone.
So I, I think that, you know.
Wait a minute, Councilor Heller, can you hear?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
So I, I think that, you know, in my view, if it's not healthiest, the, the, this amendment should just be rejected based on the fact it was deal, it was already basically set, based on the precedent, it was set at the previous meeting. That said, you know, we've made overtures because Guido tried to figure out a way to do the garage and the driveway on the side, but those have so far been there. We made overtures from the beginning of the process and we made overtures recently to, to try and say, hey, there's a way to get this done. But so far they've been difficult. I've never, I've never experienced, I, I haven't heard any interest in, in doing this. But, you know, it's not that we, whatever, not that we, we're, we're open to conversation.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Kubal Vaswani had to leave the meeting and put this in the record with any comments. First is, the county attorney says stormwater maintenance agreement is executed at the time for his issue. Has the maintenance agreement already been executed for this property? I can answer it has. The second question is, now that they are admitting the stormwater plans, does the maintenance agreement need to be amended?
Maintenance agreement does not need to be amended. I've received the executed copy in the mail. I haven't recorded it yet because the plan hasn't been approved yet.
Okay.
And then the next question is, who ensures that the agreement is recorded in the lane records?
That's me.
Does the town get the copy of the reported maintenance agreement filed? Yes. And the next is, county code strictly regulates what can be planted in town rather way. Please let applicant know, the town has had problems with planting a pulp leaves and trees in the town rather way previously. Please ask the applicant to give assurance that he will not put plants in the right way, that they not conform to our code. And then finally, he was just asking about the planting plan that he was required and believe that planting plan ordinance happened after the application was submitted. So there is not a planting plan for this application.
Would you email me that?
Yeah.
Forward that to me, please.
Yeah.
And I'll share it with council.
Okay, so Mr. Tentry, at this point, I should give the applicant rebuttal and then we can close the hearing.
Yes, yes. But would you like me to answer Councilmember Kubar's question? Because both the attorneys might like to respond on that as well.
Okay.
So to answer your question about what can and can't be considered, I think it depends on what type of consideration you have in mind. Generally speaking, the code provides that when a permit is still open and a modification is sought, it's not a new permit, it's an amended permit. So the project as a whole is generally under your jurisdiction still. But I, I would say there's certain elements that can be reconsidered, certain not. Stormwater, the code provides that the plan is based on for new construction, you know, all the impervious, all the roof coverage. So necess- necessarily you're reconsidering the entire stormwater insurance plan as a whole. The garage is new, so obviously that's under new consideration. With tree removals, the reforestation plan is based on the removals that have already been made. With no additional removals being proposed, it doesn't appear to me that there would need to be a reconsideration of the reforestation plan.
Okay, so I think that you said that Ms. Rosenfeld should have the opportunity and then the final rebuttal.
Yes. But we, we can go. Well, yeah, that, that makes sense, Mr. Mayor.
So Ms. Rosenfeld, you can make your comments and then, and then the council will debate.
Yes, thank you. I do think that the record is very clear that the council made this last decision in the context of the decision of the garage and driveway. There certainly is testimony in the record that it was rescinded, not simply, certainly not exclusively based on solar management concerns for the trees. It's evident, as even by the council's own decision, were a material factor in why it was rescinded. And bottom line, the applicant now is basically looking for reconsideration of that council's decision. And typically reconsideration would be granted if there was some evidence, broad or changing circumstances or a material misrepresentation of fact. You have none of that. All of these facts were in the record at the time the council made its original decision. So I, I think that you have ample legal authority to deny this application. And we've made our case with respect to the pervious service coverage. And we think that there are certainly plenty of room within the driveway boundaries to acquire certain pervious, but that really is being tail wagging the dog here. If it's based on the council's decision and the manner of conduct, that denial is of legally and ethically the right policy, policy that was in this case, in.
Sir.
Thank you. I'll be brief too. If, you know, unfortunately, I maybe can tell that this is very personal between the neighbors, which is not ideal. You know, and, and if we had an opportunity to go back to May, you know, to just have addressed it all at that time, that's what we would have done. But it was, the design is different. The circumstances have changed. They were required to get variances to process the previous version of the plan of a larger garage that was actually closer to the neighbor's property. One of this one's a smaller garage that's set back further. They were able to get another professional to look at it and figure out a way to do it that meets the town code requirements as a right. And, and that's what they did, as any property owner is entitled to. And I understand that there may be, you know, hard feelings about the trees and what happened, how it happened and differences of opinions. But as any resident of the town, they're able to, to exercise their rights to use their property and, and enforce the law. And that's all that Guido and Charlie are asking for. They met all the requirements. The trees, they were penalized heavily for that. It's been adjudicated that they had issues with.
with that, they could have appealed that decision. They didn't do that. They were fined. They had to replant three trees. Like that's been addressed. They just want an opportunity to have a garage that meets town code, county code. And they fulfill all their requirements. And we agree with the town's consultants. Um, and I think that, that denial of this permit would be tantamount to taking you're, you're denying them, depriving them of the opportunity to use their property as allowed, which the state law protects. And I just think that's wrong. So we respectfully request you to approve the permit.
Thank you. So the, um, the public comment period of the hearing is now complete and the record is closed. And I will turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion, the deliberations on the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions, Mr. Council President.
All right, thank you. Um, so we've heard strong feelings coming from neighbors, right? What I would say is, is the, um, motivations of, of, of the builders. And it, one of the things we've got to think about is how that bears upon, how that can bear upon our decision, given the code that we have, just bring that up. So Debbie, would you like to go first on your thoughts?
No.
Okay, then don't. All right. Um, so, come here.
Well, it was very unfortunate. Spotted that our neighbors are two wonderful families that I know well are in this situation. I appreciate Ron's feedback in terms of what's within scope and what isn't. I mean, from where I stand, we did penalize them on the trees. Whether it was illegal or whether it was mistaken, we cannot establish that. Law allowed us to penalize them. We penalized them. They paid the fine. They have done the replantings, so I cannot equate these two issues from my end, but I, I love to hear folks' views on it, but I'm struggling to equate the two. At the same time, this is a massive driveway. And it is massive, impervious surface. So I wish it was different, but it is a sizable impervious surface. And so I'm struggling with that because I think, I think that will create water runoff issues. For sure it will. It's pretty sizable. But for it to be pervious, I'm hearing contr- contrary, contradictory views. So I'm, I'm struggling with sort of the technical basis of that. And frankly, as a side note, we need to have a session with Bailey. Working session with them. Um, and then lastly, you know, uh, you know, are there creative alternatives? I, I am struggling to see that right now. I mean, it's a very narrow space. I don't see, at least from what the drawings are and everything that's presented. So that's where my, I'm sorry, it's convoluted, but that's where my
All right, thank you. That's your thinking. That's, that convoluted it maybe. All right. Um, Shannon?
Um, well, I mean, I just think that, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I do think that this is unfortunate that we're all here and that they had to sit through that long up in hand thing because they should have been first, but anyway. Um, so, but I, I do think that we, I, I, I think it was pulled because I think that the applicants were worried that the whole project was not going to get, uh, approved. Because when you look at it in the general scope of everything, you know, we're adding that long driveway and the garage in the back really changes, like in taking out all those trees, it changes like the landscape of like how it looks and um, you know, and how much impervious surface as a totality we were all considering and looking at. And, and with that driveway, it added so much extra imperviousness. And, um, so I think it was pulled, you know, because of that. And I, those are my thoughts.
All right. And Debbie, are you ready now?
Ready, sorry. Um, I think it's, it's easy to say that they paid their fines when they did the trees. Um, I think that's a great way to get away with something. And I think that's what this is all about. I, 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 I really think that this is one of those, I can't get my way the first time, so I'll come back the second time another way. And I think we need to strongly reject this application and send a message that we do things one way, the right way here in Somerset. I think we're pretty good. And I think that, as I, I've sat with these same people here now for what, four years? And I respect everybody here. And I want everybody to know when they bring something to this council that we are serious and we take you seriously. And therefore, let's do it right. That's right.
What's your reason for rejecting the application?
I think I, I might have said that, that I really believe that the whole thing with, with, um, coming back to us with this after they've illegally taken down trees. Yes, they paid their fine. That's very nice. But that's the easy way to get out of something. And I believe that this was done on purpose. And this is the way they thought they could get their garage where they couldn't get it the first time around. That's why.
All right. Okay, Steve.
All right. Um, well, just one thing on my colleagues' great, um, perspectives, um, here. And I've, I've tried to look at this as, even a, even a different, from a different perspective that if this were a new owner, if, if like all this history disappeared and a new owner came in and said they wanted to put in this driveway, how would we assess it? I'm not sure that's appropriate. I, I kind of agree with your analysis of the history, uh, Debbie, which doesn't make me happy, but I'm not sure whether we can perfectly apply that. Um, so but from that perspective, I don't, I am concerned that we don't have sufficient standing or grounding to, um, to deny the driveway. But I would like to make one significant caveat, and I've heard this from several different designers or architects, engineers about permeable materials near structures of houses and how you just, you can't do it. And my reference for saying that you can do it is the Montgomery County Rainscapes Permeable Pavement Technical Design Manual, which anyone can pull up. It's on the county government website. And it describes how you can put permeable pavers next to structures. It gives an actual diagram. You probably can't see it from here, but the gist of it is you put the pavers all the way up the structure and some distance in the ground beneath the pavers, you have like a plastic guard that keeps the water going directly into the structure. So I think it's possible. And at this discussion phase, I would say that if we do proceed and recommend approval, I would recommend permeable pavers for that entire pink area. And I believe it is less than five degrees grade. I am concerned about, you know, runoff that recreate, I would like to see permeable pavers there. And I think we'd be done in accordance with Montgomery County regulations. That's my thought.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Um, but we are not all on the same page. That is not unusual. My thoughts, I the application on the face of it is absolutely straightforward, which is what their lawyer presented at the beginning. It's absolute, it is within code, no variances are requested, all, all setbacks are met. Um, it, it, it is there. And so if, in order for us to deny it, we have to find something wrong with it. That's what it boils down to. That's, that's the issue. Now, what we can say, I suppose, is that there's no basis for an amendment, but that, that is reaching, as far as I'm concerned. Yes, we can, um, put conditions on approval such as make what can be permeable in the driveway permeable. We can do that. Um, but if we're going to reject it, we've got to find a reason buried in the code that we can use. And I don't see one myself.
Is this the, you should go to both sessions. Is there any guidance you could provide?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm available for a closed session.
Well, you can, it's, you can make a motion.
Okay, so I'm
And Ron can, uh, fashion the, the, um,
So in view of the concerns raised by my colleagues, I pro- mo- move that we go into a closed session to seek guidance from the council on how we can
But I, under the general provisions article, section three, five, oh, three, five, oh, six, subparagraph seven.
That, that's the one.
It's illegal, it's, it's
It's required.
It's illegal, yeah. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, is there a discussion, hearing, and all of us in favor? Oh, I suppose.
Let's decide, get out of here. It's eight forty-five.
I'm just dying. I had duty last night at the station. Fire station, twelve thirty call, and then at five o'clock.
Oh, my God.
Good evening, everybody. We're reconvening the meeting. And before we proceed, I'd like to ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This meeting is being recorded. Uh, they're recording me to listen to them. You two, please speak automatically towards the microphones if you're in the room. Uh, if you're not involved in active discussion on Zoom, please keep your camera off and your microphone muted. Uh, if you want to speak, please raise your hands, uh, use the raised hand feature. And please say your name for record purposes. If this meeting is interrupted, I will send out anyone who's in Zoom.
Okay, so I'm gonna, the town attorney has some, uh, announcements to make before.
Yeah, so the, the, the council entered closed session to obtain legal advice. Some legal aspects of this request were discussed. And based on one of the questions asked, it appeared to me that it might be useful to reopen the record for one aspect and for the, the council to take administrative notice with respect to an ordinance it recently adopted. And I'm looking for that ordinance now. And to give each side the opportunity to address the new evidence as well. So after I would put on the record what the council can decide whether they want to take administrative notice of, then each party would have the opportunity to discuss that or to rebut that. And then the record will close again. Deliberations will continue. So
But the town attorney wanted to make it clear that there were no deliberations about the case in the closed session. It was merely to obtain legal advice.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Legal questions were asked and answers were given, and we've held off any deliberation for the open record. So you have heard testimony about why the prior garage was subject to setbacks that, according to the applicant, rendered that plan infeasible. The town council adopted in January of twenty twenty-four, ordinance number eleven dash twenty-three dash one regarding microbi- microbioretention planter boxes. So a new type of stormwater drainage device you know, had appeared in a neighboring town. And the town council decided to amend the code to address how setbacks should apply to that retention device. And it was basically a, a device that is a microbioretention facility placed inside of retaining walls. And the retaining walls are attached to the house. And the, the retaining walls can be very tall, so it can, it can look like part of the building that it's attached to. And so that ordinance provided that that type of device would be subject to the setbacks of the building that it was attached to because it looked like that device was part of the building. And so I think there, there might have been some confusion based on all the testimony presented as to, you know, why the prior plan was subject to setbacks and why the setbacks are different for the proposed garage. And now that there is no, uh, connection between a bioretention facility that, you know, would, would increase a setback, this proposed garage is just subject to the standard accessory building setbacks without any additional setbacks applying to an attached stormwater drainage device. So if the council finds that useful, it could take administrative notice of this ordinance that was previously adopted.
So does the council wish to reopen the record?
Yes, um, I think that's appealing. I'll make a motion now to reopen the discussion of amendment to the property at fourteen nine oh five Cumberland Avenue to install the driveway and garage.
Is there a second?
Second. Is there a discussion, hearing, and all of us in favor?
Uh, thank you. So that ordinance will be treated as administrative noted, administratively noted, and now the parties will have the opportunity to address that point we figured.
So should we have, um, Ms. Rosenfeld first?
I said the applicant go first?
The applicant, then Ms. Rosenfeld, and then Karen Bala. Okay, so
Yeah, I'll actually be there, but I think that, that was my recollection, granted it was May of twenty twenty-four. Um, that that was, we, we had a number of issues. And we were dealing with, you know, the circumstance, the best of good at that time. And the complicating, the, the factor of having to get multiple variances was not viable. Uh, but they very much wanted to, to figure out a way to provide, uh, the garage. Um, and if we had, if we could go back and do it all over again, I think we would have, you know, figured it out at that time. But again, they have been delayed for many months. The city, the town, they've changed a number of times. And so they went for the best way that they could. Um, and I think that their intentions were, were good and that they were trying to adhere to the town requirements. So, uh, that ordinance that Ron, that Mr. Foley mentioned, I'm very familiar with because I was involved in the other case, uh, in Martin's addition. So I've been, I know about. So that, that is consistent with my recall to go on to the following street.
And basically, uh, as I said before, we worked for eight months with the town, with the town expert. Uh, yeah, we got the approval from Montgomery County. And, and then three days before the meeting, then the manager called us. And then he told us, look, you have a variance for high. Then two days later, he, he came back and said, look, oh, now you have a variance because of the, uh, stormwater management. The, the garage and then the plant there, they're attached together. And then this, there's a rule that came into effect. And then it's, that's not applicable anymore. Then, uh, two days later, after that, he came back and say, oh, look, we asked you for the fence in- information. And then, uh, but now, because they, the neighbor, um, your program, uh, uh, according to the code, we need to ask you for more. So, you know, now we have to provide more information for the past. So, I mean, like, we did everything that we could. We worked with the, with the town. It's, it's, we've done our best. And then at that point, and the three were not removed, and then the three were not even discussed. And then throughout the eight months, we started like, like, uh, my neighbor showed. We started with a two-car garage, going all the way in the back. Then we talked with the, with the town authorities. And so, and then he, he was, he asked us to move the garage forward so we could protect, we had two oak trees that are twenty-five inches in the back. And then he asked us to stay fifteen feet away from, from those trees. So we moved the garage forward. I knew that my neighbor didn't like that I was going to have a car garage. So I reduced from a two-car garage to one car garage. I reduced the driveway. So we have done a lot of things to please the neighbor and to please this, this town. And, you know, at, at a certain point, it was a, was a, was a, a mistake, the, the tree removal. But let's, let's talk about the trees. The trees, as I said before, were, couldn't be kept there if we wanted to build that particular house, those three. if we wanted to build that particular house, those three.
Okay, I think this is beyond. Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Rosenfeld.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure I heard correctly. The the new town code was adopted January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, is that?
Correct.
Okay. So.
In effective March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So the code was adopted in January, the applications were pending. Even notwithstanding the date that it was effective, it was on the record, it was known, it was known to the applicant, should have been known to his designers. And it makes sense that the trees were not the subject of discussion the months and months prior to the hearing. The council's hearing was on May sixth. The four trees were removed in April, and the naval trees removed were week before the hearing. So there would have been no reason to discuss the trees. Regardless of all the emphasis and suggestions that the garage and driveway will be moved to the original application because of stormwater management or other reasons, the council's decision in paragraph eleven makes it really hard to conclude it is for any other reason but the trees. As it says, the town council was unable to fully evaluate the loss presented by the removal of the four trees without permit. We know what they are, and the council in that same paragraph, the council's the town council's finding in the same paragraph was eleven, is that the applicant's counsel explained that in order to address some of the concerns raised by the neighbor previously proposed detached garage, that one year thing allowed as a right and then removed from the plans. So that connection seems very, very clear. I I don't recall any testimony, and there's nothing in the opinion that would suggest that my client was talking about stormwater management concerns at the hearing. It was about the trees. So again, I think that the record is very clear, and in respect to the I'm about to go into evidence that was discussed prior to reopening the record. I for that reason, I think that the town code that was referenced really is immaterial. And again, we request that we do make a.
Okay, so last rebuttal. Do you have any rebuttal?
I I guess I should have been clear. It's just just to clarify, their their application started before that ordinance was adopted, like well before it, so it was all changes evolving through the process. And that's where, you know, they involve me, I would come and ask you for grandfathering, or that's what we typically do. We don't hold the rug out for people. They'd already started, and they have a permit filed for, but there was nothing they could do but or ask for a variance amongst all the other things that they conceded, but reducing the height of their homes as well. So that's that's really all we got, but it did factor into the decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now the public comment period of the hearing is again completed, and the record is closed. And I will turn it over to the council president, leave the deliberations.
Right, and and to focus our discussion, I'm going to propose a motion to approve the plan as amended. And I I need a second so that we can have that discussion. It doesn't mean that we we're voting yet, but I want to have us focused on that, so.
Well, is that, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so I'm moving approval of the proposal of the permit amendment for the property located forty-nine oh five Cumberland Avenue disputed by Guido and Charmine Brackielle for amendment to the site plan to attach the to add a detached garage to add a retaining wall and the driveway, of course, as well as amendment to the stormwater management plan. Seconded, thanks. All right. My my thoughts on it are I will vote to approve this amendment, but I really hate these long driveways. In fact, I hate them so much, I want to ban garages at the back of the property because they put huge amounts of impermeable surface which lead to, with our current stormwater management plans, very energetic ways to handle all that water. But all the water is handled. You have you have handled it, you you've managed it. And there is really no need to have a permeable driveway because you've handled all the water already. That I see. I'm also concerned about the communications with your neighbor that seem to be not accurate from time to time, that that use that was a sign that you'd seen the plans when the plans haven't been presented. That's just not a way to proceed with a neighbor. Not a way to win friends and influence people. But with all that said, I approve this plan because it is absolutely straightforward, and you have the garage as a right. That's it. Okay, who wants to go next?
Is there further discussion?
Well. So this might be a question for our county engineer and the town staff, but I thought our stormwater management applied to management of the runoff from roofs. Does it also manage runoff from driveways? Yes. I thought we had driveways as just a separate requirement between.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand that question. Let me pull up the code too, so I can read.
The president indicated that we need to worry about that section privately because it's already been taken care of. I thought the way we take care of the driveways is if they're flat, we require them to be approved.
Yes, I agree with that. And let me pull up the exact code section.
Let me do one, okay. Yeah, I I mean, I think Steve's got a point that perhaps we can add that the stormwater management plan covers all rooftop surfaces and does not cover driveways. We actually built in permeable driveways as a separate criteria, yes.
So with that in mind, unless the votes next year have have a further update, I would propose a friendly amendment that we stipulate that permeable materials be used in the pink section of the drive.
All right. Okay, is there a second?
How about the green section?
Is there?
I think that's effectively permeable as is.
All right. Okay, so can you just restate your amendment? Because I don't know if EJ got it.
That segment three of the driveway that has an average slope of four point four percent be constructed with permeable materials.
Okay, there was a second. Is that's.
And we want to say we say in accordance with the Montgomery County Technical Design Manual.
Is it? Is that acceptable?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, we forgot to also open the record.
I think that's what I thought.
Design manual on the record and allow the parties to testify as to that issue.
That's what I thought. But I don't think we can.
In deliberation, after after rebuttals.
So can we?
Well, it doesn't.
We we don't have to. Do we have to open the record?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be in the amendment.
Well, but I I think it's probably important to debate because this this pavement touches the house, or, yes, and and so I think there is a debate as to whether pavers are appropriate for that.
Okay, so do we vote against this motion?
We can. I think we can leave it. We can leave them there. And so is there a motion to reopen the record?
So.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion, hearing and all this in favor?
Aye.
All this. Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, can you restate?
Yes, so what the. So during deliberations, we took notice of the sorry, the Montgomery County Rainscapes Program Manual and what the manual says with respect to whether permeable pavers can be located. And there was other evidence of the record that I, Mr. Tid, I believe, who said they should be ten feet from foundations. So we'll reopen the record for the limited purpose of discussing the Rainscapes recommendation versus Mr. Tid's recommendation or testimony. Thanks. And I I guess, Mr. Mayor, too, the the parties could be invited to address the town code requirement for permeable pavers for driveways that are under a five-foot slope.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think, and Eric said, but just to expedite, then, of course, he's an expert in stormwater management. But I think Guido and Charmine, if DPS will allow them, to the extent that they'll allow them to use permeable pavers or permeable materials, then that's fine. It's just that Eric had raised the concern about whether the county will prove it. If the county won't prove it in that section, then they'll bill. So I don't think that's really all we have to say.
Okay.
May I just ask a question, Mr. Mayor? So, Mr. Gordon, is there also a potential for a a middle road there where the county could say you can't have it within ten feet, but everywhere else in the pink?
Yeah, exactly, however you word it, which is the ball, but to be within that section where it can be permitted, and we can we can go talk to Mark Blackbridge, who's that had a stormwater management of DPS. And basically, we can show him, you know, and ask him, he'll be candid.
Right, to the maximum extent possible.
Yes, okay. Okay, so that was your. There was only a question, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Rosenfeld, now you have an opportunity. You you have a chance to comment.
We would have read a condition that requires the applicant to submit permiest services for the pink section to the maximum extent possible. We would also ask that the patient be submitted first to the town from review and approval by your engineer for accuracy, ones provided to.
Thank you. Do you care to rebut?
I think that that's probably fine. I just make sure that it's administrative. I think if I have to come back forth to it, there might be looking for a deposit, so I'm out of I'm out of public hearings with this. But if we can do it administrative, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So I am going to again close the record and turn it back over to the campaign. Well, actually, we're debating, we're debating the.
I want to go back to Steve. Steve, do you wish to propose the amendment still?
He did want to propose.
He already did have a second. So is there further discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I I I'm I'm going to oppose the amendment because I think the county will not approve the permeable papers.
Let's find out.
Okay, is there further? Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Well, I just I don't think there's any need for us to, for the time's expense of setting material to fail and review. Because ask the applicant to work with DPS and find out what is the maximum extent possible.
Well, yeah, I know, but but the the that's where the figure about ten feet from the house comes from. It's it's from DPS.
That's fine.
Well, you're so you're opposed to the amendment, that's fine. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Hearing and all this in favor? You have a vote for it?
The amendment. Did Councilmember Heller vote?
Why would you restate? Can you, Ms. Can somebody restate the amendment?
So Councilmember Barr's motion was to approve the plan as presented.
The amendment of.
So the amendment is that the pink part of the driveway shown on the plan presented this evening would be constructed of permeable pavers to the maximum extent possible based on county approval of the location of permeable pavers. So the applicant would be required to discuss where permeable pavers could be located in connection with the house and the proposed garage with the County Department of Permeing Services, and then come up with a a plan based on that county approval.
Okay, so I'm calling the vote. So all those in favor.
Okay, can I just say something? I am confused. I am planning to vote no on this permit. What does that mean if I vote for this amendment?
It just means that it's added to the motion. It means that it's added to the motion.
You can still vote however you wish.
But you can still vote. You can still vote. You can still vote any way you want on the motion as amended. But right now, the vote is on the amendment.
Okay.
Are you up or down?
I'm up.
Okay, so I think there was three yess, and did you vote?
Abstaining, so but a three three.
No, don't answer for her. What are you? What is your vote?
I'm not going to vote.
Okay, so it passed, it carried three one one. Okay, now the the motion as amended. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so it's three two. Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, the next yeah, the next, so I'm going to combine the the item six and seven. So it's a public hearing consideration of approval for proposed proposal submitted by American Pools in an amount of eight hundred, eight hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for management services for the Somerset for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight pool seasons. And the town manager is going to explain his recommendation.
Quickly.
Yes, I'm going to try to quickly. We got six bids. I'll just focus on why we're choosing the American Pools. It's a primary minimum because compared to all the other bids, they offer the most services, the most dividends in the Somerset Pool. They have an existing positive relationship for the multiple residents in the last couple of days asking to go with American Pools. I know the pool committee has voted to be in favor of continuing with American Pools. I will note that the biggest negative is that they are the most expensive option. It's not by a whole lot compared to the second, but it is there. However, I think that that happens because they're the only bid that's not full of riddled with optional add-ons. They have everything all inclusive because all the other bids have like extra packages, extra thinnedums, add-ons. These are things that we would require with a pool our size and with the activities that we offer. So if we did a true price comparison, they would all be around the same price, if not even more expensive than the American Pools. I can continue, but I'm having these questions, so that's my.
Thank you, thank you. I I just want everybody to know that I think the process this year was, I think that EJ managed a very extensive process, and I really thank him for for going by our procurement rules so beautifully. Council President, Board, do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, I I'm going to agree. A united pool management proposal is almost the same price as Ameri, you know, American pools. It there's a few dollars difference, that's it. American pool has real advantages. First of all, they have detailed the proposal, as you said. Also, they're well-known in the town. They have but we don't need references for them because we we all trust them already. So I think it is a straightforward.
Okay, so do you have any? This is the time for questions.
That's that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sarko, do you have any questions? Thank you. Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
No. Can I make a comment?
Well, it'll be deba, why don't you haul that off when when it's?
I I have a very, okay, I can't stay on much longer, Jeffrey. I'm dying here.
Okay, well, we're almost there. Did you? Do you want to wait until there's a motion on the floor?
Okay, I can wait.
Councilmember.
No questions, second the process.
Councilmember Rovak.
No questions.
Okay, so I think that, are there comments? I think Matt's out. Want to say something?
I mean, he hasn't raised his hand yet. I don't think he wants to say.
I I know, but he he he's been texting.
Can I make a motion?
Hold on a second.
Now, would you like to say anything?
I I'm I'm fine not saying anything. Power through.
Okay, are you ready to make a motion?
Yes, motion to approve proposal submitted by American Pool to the amount of eight hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eighty for management services of the Somerset Pool for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and two thousand twenty-eight season.
Second, okay. Okay, Councilor Heller, did you want to say something?
I did. I wanted to say that we need, that I think we should definitely support, we should pass this. American Pools has done a great job for us last year. They got that pool built, and they got it open with, I think, a one week, you know, a one week off. They've managed the pool beautifully this year, and I I really watched that. And I think we need to to. And I think we need to, um, to keep them. That's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed.
Is there a motion to reject?
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.